Thank you, Rob. We'll bring our committee, the whole meeting to order this morning. Is there any declaration of interest on this agenda? Seeing none, of course, you can declare it at any time if one arises. We have two delegations here this morning. The first is David Willis. He's with us here this morning. There he is. Come on up to the podium, sir. He's going to be speaking to us regarding Keystone Funding and Services. So, good morning, sir, and welcome. The floor is yours.
Are we good? Sorry to have my back to some folks, not intentional. My understanding is I've been invited to come and speak a little bit about Keystone and the program that we have and how the funding from this body supports our operations across both, mostly focused on Gray County, but Bruce County as well. And so, without further, I will jump into just giving you a sense of what Keystone Child Youth and Family Services is. We are the lead agency for Gray and Bruce Counties. That is a legislated function by the Ministry of Health that came into effect probably mid 2013, 2014. And what that means is that we're the system planners for child and youth mental health, both counties. We're also the, the organization that supports evaluation, that supports funding opportunities, and supports grassroots organizations in building up their capacity to support children and youth and mental health services across the region. We lead local needs assessments and engage with youth and families and service providers in shaping the system priorities in three to four-year blocks, which means we are accountable to the ministry and the provincial government to deliver on those plans. We are currently in the process of developing the next four-year priorities for the ministry. We also serve as the key point of contact with the Ministry of Children, Community, and Social Services. And for those who are aware of our ministries, we lived in MCCSS when it was called MCYS, and then it was yanked out and put into Ministry of Health. Some services still remain in MCCCS, some services are in Ministry of Health, and so we bridge both of those ministries to support children and youth in our region. So if we, and I apologize for how small that writing is, hopefully everyone can, can see it without their glasses. I just wanted to give a snapshot of the, of the breadth and the scope of services that we provide, that this funding actually supports in many ways. So from our counseling and treatment services, we have crisis support services, a great example of how this funding supports us as we have currently engaged with the trauma specialist who is onsite in Hanover, supporting those kids and families. We have team-based interventions, which is a wraparound service. We engage with psychiatry, psychology, social work to, to wrap around clients and families to support them in their mental health journey. We have specific partnerships, like the Hospital for Sick Children, where we are a part of what's called telepsychiatry or telelink mental health, where we are one of thirty agencies across the province who have specialized access to over fifty child and youth psychiatrists who specialize in zero to eighteen. We have supported classrooms through our partnerships with Blue Water. I'm not sure if folks realize, but right beside this building, we have a thirteen-bed live-in treatment facility that was a partnership with Bright Shores. Within that building, there are two Blue Water School Board classrooms, where we have sixteen desks, where sixteen students who are struggling within the, the regular education system come and spend up to six months or a year with us to get them back on track and moved back into the, the regular education system. We also have intensive in-home treatment. So as part of our continuum of services, if we have a client who is with us in our live-in treatment, and I'll speak a little bit about this further in the deck, we recognize that kids who come into live-in treatment when they are released from live-in treatment or they graduate from live-in treatment, they often go back to an environment and circumstances that bring them right back to the reason why they came into care in the first place. And so part of our mandate and our new programming has been that we embed child and youth workers in the home with the family up to a year after their discharge from our live-in treatment, so that that transition both into the community and into school is seamless, and that if they need a tune-up, they can come back in and we can support them to sort of get them back on track. When we think about prenatal and six-years community support, Healthy Beginnings, which is a program that is funded through this, this council in partnership with the Ministry of Education, they support new moms and dads and caregivers who are struggling with, with the youth that they have, and we support them in healthy eating, healthy management. We give them a break sometimes so that they can catch their breath. Cradle Link is the same thing. We have volunteers that actually sit in the hospital and hold babies so that they have that skin-to-skin contact. Brighter Futures, Early On Centers, and Building Resiliency, I think those are quite familiar probably to this group. We also specialize in fetal alcohol spectrum disorder, which if folks recognize is a lifelong disability. It's not a mental health challenge, it's an actual disability, and so we are supporting youth up to the age of twenty-one to function with what we would consider an external brain beside them, supporting them and making better decisions so that they, so that they are moving in the right path with the right supports. Coordinated Access Mechanisms for Children in Gray-Bruce. This, this, this supports youth up to seventeen years of age with complex needs. And this is a part of a larger program that Keystone has taken on as the leader in on behalf of the Ministry of Community and Social Services, and that is for those kids and families who have failed out of our system. That they have knocked on every door, they have, they have been enrolled in every service possible, and we are simply not supporting them in a way that is possible. So we're the flow-through organization where we support the family, and we, we liaise with the ministry to ensure that they have funding in order to support and purchase the services that they require for that specialized youth. We also provide respite services for autism spectrum disorder families. We are in a, I would say, a crisis mode in this county around autism. We have no permanent services to support kids and families with autism. So with the very little money we get, we provide an opportunity for parents to step back, take a breather, maybe hire someone to come in for a few hours to support their child while they are regrouping and able to come back into the family situation and to, and to support their client. So what we are really excited about at the moment is our new live-in treatment program and our Step Up/Step Down program, and that is literally right beside this building. It is the old withdrawal management site that the hospital had. Through partnership with them, that, that ownership was transferred to us. The Ministry of Health was kind enough to invest about two and a half million dollars to move it away from looking like a withdrawal management center and make it look more like something that kids and youth would feel comfortable in. There are currently thirteen beds in that, in that building. Six of those are dedicated for Step Up/Step Down, and that is a program in partnership with the hospital systems across both of our counties. So what happens is there are eleven feeder hospitals that, that try to access the two pediatric beds in the Owen Sound Hospital as what's called the Schedule One facility. Owen Sound Hospital isn't even funded to be a Schedule One for youth, but they are managing to, to, to supply two beds for us when kids who are in such crisis that they need to be admitted against their will. So oftentimes, we see kids who land in the emerge, who are quite serious, maybe in a, in a situational crisis. They're not admissible, which means that they're not really, they shouldn't be in a bed in the hospital, but they're not safe enough to go home. So our Step Up/Step Down program is that intermediary for those kids. So we get a call from the hospital and they say to us, and this could be at any day, any time of day or night. We've got a seventeen-year-old youth who has been self-harming, who has, you know, run into the, into the law several times. We can't release him without someone to support him, family doesn't want him. So we will show up at the emerge at two in the morning, and we will do an intake for that child into our Step Up/Step Down program, where they are given what's called a thirty-day assessment and stabilization opportunity, where we bring in psychiatry, we bring in psychology, we bring in social work, and we work with that client and family to best understand the needs in that moment for that youth. And that may be one of a continuum of services. It may be community counseling and support in the home. It may be admitting into our unit so that they can stay now up to a year if that's what's required, and we can do intensive in-home or intensive in-school support as well. We also have the ability to step back up when that client is in crisis again. So the partnership allows that bilateral flow between the hospitals and us. And that is, that has been a very busy program, is all I can say. The next program on this, on this deck, which is launching in January, I think is something that has been very much needed in this, in this county for a long time, and that is an urgent access program. And so as I was speaking earlier about the eleven feeder hospitals, what happens often is that a child or a youth lands in one of those hospitals, and they can be sitting there in their emerge up to a week, waiting for a bed in Owen Sound. And if there are no beds in Owen Sound, they are blocked into that hospital system and remain there. So we have signed agreements with the three hospital systems. We have, we are now in the process of hiring eight crisis workers who will be deployed wherever those clients and families need that support, in the emergency room, in the family home, in the school, it doesn't matter where at this point. We will support that family in, in bringing down the temperature so that we can then start working with the client and family to support what's next. And that could be anything from landing next door to community counseling and a broad range of other services. So that actually launches in January. We have a, we have a, what was our old live-in treatment in downtown Owen Sound? That has been completely renovated and will become a hub for crisis services. So when families want to come in and do counseling, they will have a dedicated space for them and the clinicians and the, and the youth. It will also be a walk-in crisis, so if kids are experiencing something in the community and they need immediate support, we will be there with doors open, waiting to support those youths. The other, this next slide is really just an indication of where our focus is, and as you can see up there, seventy-one percent of our clients come from Gray County. And that's about seventeen hundred and seventy-five clients per year. Now this isn't, and what I want to stress is when we see twenty-five hundred clients, those are new clients every year. Those are not repeats. Those are individuals showing up for the first time. And so that's an indication of the need within our two counties and specifically within Gray County for mental health services. And I, it surprises me every time I look at our data to recognize that there is that level of need within, within this region. The other piece that, you know, and, and this is maybe a little bit outside of what we're supposed to be having a conversation about, but this is about two of the programs that are funded through this, this, this council on behalf of the Ministry of Education, our Early On Center and our Building Resiliency Center. And my understanding in being invited here was to, in some ways, justify the funding that we receive from this council to support child and youth mental health in this region. And in the past, we have been very lucky to have the council come to us at the end of your fiscal year to say we have some surplus and we can support a deficit if you have a deficit. What I would say is we have never not had a deficit in these two programs. And so this is the first year that we are recognizing from council that there is no appetite or ability to cover those deficits. And so what you're seeing in front of you is in fact what we are projecting as a seventy-three thousand dollar deficit in these two programs. We are committed to these programs in a big way, but we are also realistic on how we can support our staff and the programming to continue. So if you look down at the bottom, we started this journey for early on in two thousand and ten with a, with a budget of two hundred and thirty, or two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Fifteen years later, we're at two forty-two. And that represents, it represents cost of living increases, it represents unionized agreements and increases that come with that, it represents the cost of doing business, transportation, building supplies. Doesn't stretch far enough for us. So unfortunately, we are in a position where if, if we do not find some other alternate source of funding, that we are going to have to shift some of the funding that the council provides us to cover these deficits. I recognize that that is not the ultimate, or that is not the intent of this, but our funding agreements with the Ministry of Health and MCCSS forbid us to, to reallocate funds outside of ministry-funded programs. And so it is a dilemma for us. We have, we've undertaken a broad range of conversations across the province with other early-on centers to understand what they're doing and what they're doing well, and what we're not doing or what we're doing and not, not in the same way as others are. And what we've come away with is a commitment to continue our early-on and building resiliency programs because we recognize the value that they provide to the county and the kids. Early on in particular, I, I spent some time in Ottawa a couple of weeks ago with an early-on center where they have speech and language, OTPT psychiatry in their early-on centers, and it is a transitionary opportunity for those kids who identified as needing more support than just the early-on center, moving into the other services that are, that are available for them in a seamless way. And as lead agency in Gray and Bruce Counties, our obligation is to ensure that every kid lands where they need to land, and our early-on center should be a conduit for those who require more service to seamlessly move into those programs. And so that's our hope, that's our goal. And, and we are going to work as, as hard as we can to ensure that those services continue with the support of this council. And with that, I would reel back to council and be open to questions or comments from anyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Willis. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Nielsen, please.
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. Just a question for you. You've spoken at the beginning of your presentation pretty extensively about working with youth who are experiencing crisis situations and such. So just for my own clarity, the Community Safety Wellbeing Plan that exists in the Situation Tables that exists from that, it's Keystone that helps out with those situations. Because from my understanding, it's a, a large part of the Situation Tables are youth situations in our community, not so much adult situations.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Any other questions? Counselor Kentner, please.
I guess we could really question you all day, I think, on this topic, but is the situation getting worse? Like, I, I worked with you, you know, twenty-five years ago, and, and it's always been there, but is it getting worse? And maybe some reasons why. Thank you.
Oh, do we have all day? All right. Short answer is absolutely. And a great example that I can give is COVID. We are, as a population, and particularly as youth, dysregulated coming out of COVID. So when you isolate youth for three years and they have a little bit of anxiety or a little bit of depression, three years later, that is full-blown mental illness. And, and we are seeing that in spades. Our numbers continue to go up. The acuity, the severity of those clients continues to increase. And so as an odd but interesting piece of data, eating disorders tripled during COVID, which means that kids were sitting in front of their computers, taking in all kinds of information around body image, around, you know, things that sort of support that emergence of eating disorders, and now we have this huge need for eating disorders programming across the province. And not just the province, but the country. So we are, we are seeing more addictions in our, in our presentations. Autism is increasing at a rapid rate. And the comorbidity, so that, so the, you know, it isn't just anxiety, it's anxiety, depression, OCD, and other things showing up at the same time. And so we are, you know, what we would say is that twenty-seven hundred kids, we could move through in a year. Some of those kids now stay with us for several years because it is that intense. So it is, it's a, it's a challenge.
Any other questions? Oh, Counselor McQueen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden, and thank you for your presentation. Certainly learned a lot here this morning, just in your brief time here. Two things, I don't know if you're able to provide this information to our lower-tier councils, because I think information is important for, to share what you're just talking about this morning, but from the private sector or from personal donations, is that something you receive as well or can receive?
The short answer is yes. The longer answer is it is never enough. And, and as a, as an organization that is funded through ministries and other mechanisms, I don't think it's good business sense to use donation dollars to fund operations. And so what we do with donation dollars is we do test pilots, we do proof of concepts. If there's a, if there's a repair to a playground that is falling apart, we will take those donation dollars and we will use that to rebuild the, rebuild the playground. That's what we do.
Thank you again for that. A few years back, we had an individual that was in our museum in Flotterton. And he got the name Museum Rob, you know, but, but he, he sort of engaged with the youth in the sense of pride and ownership. And he was quite successful, and he, and he just got kids involved in, you know, the Handley Institute and other ones, you know, that are out there doing great things. It's, 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 I don't know if it's, it's kids today don't have that pride and ownership or not, I don't know, but sometimes individuals can, can make a big difference, and obviously your, your, your group's doing that. But again, I just think it's awareness and, you know, probably if there's good news stories, people that can hear those good news stories, and that could generate your funding as well. And that's what I'm saying is sometimes it's in the stories and the good news stories that you share. And, you know, because that, you know, to see a deficit and see a program that you're offering greatly reduced because of, well, your funding from two thousand and ten till now hasn't changed a lot, and I guess the advocate, the advocating to the province as well, is that happening as well? And, and is your role there as well?
I, I would, I would describe it as we chase the dollars. We are, like, I probably have ten different business cases that I continually circulate into the ministries for funding, and if there is any opportunity for one-time funding, we grab it. We've become very good at sort of chasing that dollar and, and using it to support, to support the organization. Yeah. The challenge is, of course, we will never, I mean, if we were to get enough money that we needed to support all of the needs, it would be a massive budget. And so it's the reality that we live with. Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Wells. It was a good presentation, and we appreciate your time to come and talk to us today. Thank you. All right, moving on, we have one more delegation. Greg Jones will be attending online. There he is from Skyline. He's going to be talking to us regarding development charges, deferral, and conditioning, conditional exemption agreement today. So, Mr. Jones, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, thank you, Deputy Warden. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Apologies for not being able to attend in corporeal form today. My name is Greg Jones. I'm the president of SkyDev, part of the Skyline Group of Companies. And I'd love to take the opportunity to tell you a little bit about Skyline and, and about our development in Owen Sound and the development charges policy that you have and how it's exciting to be able to invest in rental housing in the County of Gray. With that, I'll start a presentation. Can you see that okay, or should I?
Oh, we can see it, yeah.
Okay. All right. So a little bit about Skyline. We started in the nineties with student rentals. Eventually, we started buying apartment buildings. We have an apartment REIT, an industrial REIT, a retail REIT, and a clean energy fund. Together, we have about ten billion of real estate assets in Canada. Now, the most relevant portfolio is we own and manage over twenty thousand rental apartments across Canada. About twenty percent of the rental housing, purpose-built rental housing in the County of Gray. So we are a landlord today, and we provide housing for people today in, in the county. We have an industrial REIT, about ten million square feet of high bay industrial warehousing. We have breads and meds with a retail REIT. We're, we're in small town Ontario across Canada. We don't own anything in major cities. We're all secondary and tertiary markets, investing in grocery stores and pharmacies primarily. We are the biggest producer of bio-
I'm sorry, but I can't help you with that right now.
Sorry about that. We're the biggest producer of biogas in Canada with our plant in Elmyra and Lethbridge, Alberta. Co-founders and myself as SkyDev, we're currently building about one thousand five hundred rental apartments in Ontario at the moment. My partners are a couple of guys from Walkerton, Ontario, and Fergus, Ontario. What have we done recently? We've delivered over six hundred rental apartments in communities like Chatham, Tecumseh, Ravenhurst, Welland, Collingwood. We even do supportive housing as a pro bono initiative for nonprofits, trying to make a difference, create meaningful value in, in the communities we're investing in. What are we building right now? We're building in the town of Simcoe, near Port Dover, the city of Belleville, the city of Owen Sound, which we'll, we'll cover, and the city of Barry. We, I'll just show you some imagery quick of our development in Collingwood, what it looks like today. We're, we are leasing rental apartments now. We always have great indoor/outdoor amenity spaces. Just giving you a flavor of what we're working on. This is Simcoe, Ontario. I'll show you a, a quick, a quick clip. We're building one hundred and ninety-nine rental apartments in the county of Norfolk. I don't know if you can hear the music, but it-
No, we're not, we're not, we're not hearing the music. We can see the video.
Belleville. We have two buildings here, a hundred and sixty-six rentals with a central amenity building. We have a development in Barry right on the four hundred. You'll see some towers coming up. We have five hundred and sixty-five apartments under construction at the moment. Here's a quick drone video of what it looks like today. Give you an idea of what we're doing and what we're building and what we're investing in. All these projects are one hundred percent rental apartments. So I can see a bit of an update there of what we're working on, what we're investing in. Discussing the development charges, policies, and exemptions. The policy in place from the County of Gray is what makes rental housing possible in the area. We're investing big time in Owen Sound, and I'll just show you some pictures. The, we have three buildings under construction of eight. It's two hundred and sixty-seven new rental apartments, and we're, I mean, great views of the bay and the water. We broke ground a few months back. And you'll see some, the buildings coming up over, over the winter. The, here's another photo. Where because of the policy of the County of Gray exempting development charges for rental housing projects, we're, we're also looking at making our Aspen Insurance Project in Meaford rental. Presented that to council a few weeks ago, as well as a destination boutique hotel. Just some quick renderings. So I mean, we're investing in rental housing across the province. We are investing in the County of Gray big time because of the policies at place where, you know, you're, you're able to build rental housing for regular people. Just, we're targeting the average income in the area. You have a lot of retirees that sell their homes and make housing available to other people and are able to move into a turnkey lifestyle with elevators, as well as some big projects in the area where you have basically workforce housing for people to be able to live in and have great views of the water in both Owen Sound and Meaford. So today, we're talking about Owen Sound and the request for exemption. I, I just wanted to share from a business perspective, being able to say, hey, we have an exemption on this, on this property. being able to say, hey, we have an exemption on this, on this property to be able to build more rental housing. What that allows me to do is get more investment. Uh, so it's not just people renting apartments, it's attracting investment in rental housing. It's not a very good yield. It's a, it's a long-term ownership situation where we own and manage buildings for decades. Uh, so we're, you know, we're implementing sustainable technologies because it saves money. Uh, we do solar. We do, um, all, all the, all the LEDs and all the, the things you can do to save on energy and make energy. Kind of like our, our Skyline Energy Fund, uh, does, uh, literally makes money out of garbage and sunshine. So we're always after those initiatives. Uh, we build rental housing across the country and own and keep it for a long period of time. What I, the ask today is, is to allow for an exemption on the entire development to mirror what the city of Owen Sound has done. Uh, where we're able to attract more investment in rental housing. Uh, there's nonprofits interested in the property. Uh, more investors that are ready to, to start the next building and the next building as they fill up. But for absorption, we started with the first three and we'd like that confidence, uh, to, to move forward and continue to invest in more rental housing for the County of Gray. And so the requested motions really similar to option two in your, uh, staff report where we're asking for a ten-year agreement, uh, exempt the first phase, uh, and delegate staff to approve future phases based on criteria of delivering rental housing. So that's the, the ask and just wanted to introduce who we are and what we do. Uh, Bay Shore Street Development is just the name of the company that owns the land. We are Skyline. We are, we own over a hundred million dollars of rental housing in the County of Gray and we're investing another two hundred million dollars over the next few years because of what this council has done and what staff policies created to make it possible and, uh, give people great places to live.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Jones, for the presentation. Uh, it sounds like you're a busy fellow with, uh, with your partners. Uh, are there any, we do, as you mentioned, there is a staff report, uh, upcoming, uh, in this meeting later. Uh, maybe not so later, depending on how council feels about it. But anyway, uh, there is a, a, a staff report there. Are there any, but for now, are there any questions from council? Council Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Deputy Warden. Just a quick question. You, you've spoken to the, um, purpose-built rental units. Is there a percentage that is being, um, targeted for affordable housing rental units in this project or is it just, um, market rate?
Mr. Jones?
Uh, through the Deputy Warden, it is all market housing. Um, we tried to build more supply for the province of Ontario. We're, we're open to additional grants to create deeply affordable rentals, but we do try to target the average income in, in a community. And if we charge too much, they would just buy a home. So we have to keep it affordable. From that perspective, deeply affordable, open to additional grants to make it more affordable. It's just, it's just math for us. We don't, we're not against it. We do it all the time. City of Barry, we did, uh, ten percent affordable in the first tower, uh, through grants through their CIP program.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, not seeing any further questions for now. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. And as I indicated, there is a staff report later in the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Warden.
Okay, uh, moving on, uh, we have a consent agenda there, a number of items. Are any of those required to be, uh, removed for further discussion? Counselor Greg?
Six A, please.
Six A, did you say? Okay. Any others? Uh, Counselor McQueen?
Deputy Warden, six B?
Okay, six B? Any others? All right, I'd take a mover and a second or two to deal with the others. Counselor Ackles, Counselor Bourdignolle. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. And we will deal with those two items later in the meeting. So, uh, we now come to the, uh, matters that require further direction and discussion. Is there an appetite to move the Skyline report up to the first item? Anyone object to that? Counselor Nielsen? You're good with that? Do we need a motion, Madam Clerk? No, I think we'll just go on consensus. I don't see any objection. So we'll deal with item seven D first, which is the Skyline report. If someone would like to make, uh, make the motion to, uh, that is recommended, Counselor DeBreen and Counselor Hutchison. Okay, welcome Scott. The floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, good morning, Deputy Warden and members of council and, and those that might be tuning in today. Uh, so this report, as, as, uh, indicated, uh, in, in the title bar was a team effort. This was, was done by Mary Lou and, and Lacey and myself. Uh, I'm just the lucky one that gets to speak with you because maybe I like hearing my own voice the most. I'm not sure. Um, but I'll try not to, to, um, go over what Greg has already shared. And, and, and first off, I, I do want to reiterate the fact that, uh, staff are thrilled that companies like Skyline are, are choosing to invest in our communities and, and more importantly, choosing to invest in rental housing. Um, for years, many years ago, we were seeing a slowdown in rental builds and, and so the past, you know, five or six years, we've, we've really seen an increase in the number of rental units and we're really thrilled that, uh, that, uh, uh, both local developers and, and those from maybe slightly further afield are choosing to invest in, in rental in our communities in that regard. Just as a bit of background to council, um, for the last number of years, uh, county staff have regularly entered into what we call development charges exemption agreements uh, for purpose-built rental housing. Uh, and, and so these, these agreements, uh, are, are under policy eleven dash one, uh, that, uh, that, uh, council has delegated, uh, certain signing authorities to the, uh, Director of Finance and Director of Planning in that regard. And would allow within certain limits, the county to enter into, uh, an exemption agreement whereby the developer doesn't have to pay the development charge upfront. And furthermore, if, if they abide by the, the terms of the agreement for the duration of the agreement, uh, they actually never have to, to, uh, pay the development charge. Uh, and in broad strokes, usually what that agreement says, uh, is from, from, uh, from the signing of the agreement, you have five years to, to build development. Uh, and then from first occupancy, you need to keep the development as rental housing for a minimum of twenty years in that regard. The development charge exemption agreements that the counties entered into to date, uh, have not been tied to affordability. Um, but they are, uh, tied to, to being long-term rental units. Uh, so somebody can't condominiumize their development, if you will, and, and nor they do, nor do they allow for short-term rentals on a nightly basis in that regard. Um, so at a background level, that's, that's what, um, what the development charge exemption agreements do. Uh, as we heard from Mr. Jones, um, these agreements have been very successful. We've talked to, uh, developers that, that have told us that, that this really turned the tide between investing in Gray or investing in another community. Uh, it, it really made them, uh, consider and reconsider investments in rental housing in that regard. And we're thrilled because that's the vision that county saw. Uh, a county council saw a few years ago and to see it pan out and to see, uh, more units being built in that regard, um, is, is simply wonderful. Um, and so to get into sort of the, the meat and potatoes of, of this particular development, uh, as Mr. Jones noted, uh, they are looking at building, uh, seven hundred and twelve uh, rental units across eight buildings. There'd be a hundred and sixty-eight one-bedroom units, uh, five hundred and forty-four two-bedroom units. Uh, they have gotten permits and started construction on their first phase, which is two hundred and sixty-seven units, uh, across three separate buildings. As Mr. Jones mentioned, uh, it's our understanding that the city of Owen Sound has entered into, uh, a similar development charges exemption agreement, uh, for the duration of, of the, the, um, seven hundred and twelve units rather than just the first phase in this regard. Um, I will note that staff are recommending, uh, that the county just enter into phase one for now and that we consider, uh, future phases as, as they get closer to coming online in that regard. Uh, certainly we've had other developments whereby, uh, we, we entered into a development charges exemption agreement for phase one. Uh, and then when they were ready to do phase two, they came back and, and we entered into a, a, a second agreement in that regard. Certainly understand from, from Mr. Jones and his colleagues' perspectives, uh, why they'd want to enter into a development charges agreement for, for the entirety upfront, uh, would certainly assist with, with long-term planning and financing in that regard. Um, but from a staff perspective, um, we've seen a lot of change in the development charges sphere over the last, uh, five or six years. Uh, we are coming up on a review of the county's, uh, development charges background, uh, study and bylaw next year. Uh, and, and so that's the opportunity for, for council and staff and the community to provide feedback on, on what's appropriate within those development charges. And, and some of what's appropriate might also be those, those, uh, uh, policies around the, the exemption agreements in that regard. Now, so, uh, what staff are recommending here is, is just the slightly more cautious approach of entering into the development charges exemption agreement for phase one and then considering each future phase as they come along based on both the legislation and the county's own policy as, as they come out in that regard. I should also mention, um, there's a bit of an error in the report and, 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 uh, Mr. Jones's team was nice enough to alert, alert us to that. Uh, and that comes in the financial and resource implications section. Uh, what you'll see in that financial and resource implication section, uh, is, is the county staff have said that the total development charges would be uh, approximately three point three million for the entire thing and one point two million, uh, for phase one. Uh, county staff in, in preparing this, um, misinterpreted the development charges legislation in this regard around development charges late rate freezes. And, and not to let myself off the hook here, but it's easy to misinterpret because there's changes about every four months in this regard. Um, but nevertheless, we misinterpret it. Um, and, and so there is currently a rate freeze in place which dates back to the, uh, twenty twenty-two development charges rates. Um, so if we were to carry that forward and, and that rate freeze is in place for a time limited period, um, but it is currently in place for, for certainly the, the pulling of the first building permits and depending on how quickly the development proceeds, it could be future building permits too. But that three point three million dollar number for the entire project, uh, goes to about two point six million. Uh, and that one point two million for phase one goes to about nine hundred and ninety thousand. So the, the, the dollar values are lower, um, but it doesn't change the staff recommendation in that because for the total development, they're asking for um, um, a term and a dollar value that's beyond our staff delegated signing authority, uh, we'd still need to go to council in this regard. Um, so just to reiterate, we're recommending entering into phase one for now. Um, there is already a temporary, uh, deferral agreement in place, so they've been allowed to proceed and, and get their permit, so that doesn't change. Um, and then that would consider each phase as it goes. That said, certainly if council wants to, um, consider another option, uh, there is a further option considered, uh, in the report and, and similar to what, uh, Mr. Jones has presented us here today. So maybe just before turning it over to, to questions, I'll just see with, uh, Lacey and Mary Lou, have I missed anything or anything you'd like to clarify? Okay, with that, turn it back to you, Deputy Warden. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And as Scott mentioned, there is another option. So I want to be clear that the mover and seconder understand that they moved to support option one. Is that, okay, very good. So that's, that's the motion on the floor is to support staff's recommendation. Counselor Nielsen, please.
Thank you very much, Deputy Ward. Just a question for you, Scott. The, you kind of joked about it that every four months we're seeing changes in the development charges and currently there's a lot of rhetoric coming from both the province and the federal government about development charges and, and housing. My question for you is, if we enter into an agreement like this, how binding is it if the province and federal governments change development charges to be zero for purpose-built rental housing, which is kind of the conversation we're hearing that they want to see them be removed or limited or scaled back. And so my question is, is it almost a benefit to the developer to enter into the agreement for phase one because we're binding them on, on, on just a portion rather than binding them if their province changes anything and, and kind of I'm trying to understand the implications that way?
Uh, through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. That is a great question, Counselor Nielsen. Uh, I wish I had an answer for you. Um, it's, it's, it's something that staff have also been struggling with and, and certainly can't, I'm not in any way qualified to provide legal advice or, or speculate on what future, uh, legislation would say. Um, but from a lay perspective, I would say, um, if the province were to make future for changes in that regard, uh, it might depend on sort of the transition, uh, provisions and or how, uh, far reaching that legislation spoke to. You know, whether it impacts on a go-forward only basis or whether there's some sort of retroactivity clause in that regard. But I think to give a more fulsome answer, A, we'd need to know what the province is, is proposing or, or putting in place and, and then B, we'd need to, uh, uh, consult our legal counsel on that.
Thank you, Scott. Any other? Counselor Body, please.
Thank you. A question from Mr. Taylor, approximately, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, so not approximate at all. We got a letter from the, uh, Ontario government that development charges, uh, there is a policy change at the provincial level with regard to deferrals. Does our Gray County policy match what, uh, the province is suggesting?
Uh, through you, Deputy Warden, and I might have to rely on, on Lacey for some of those too. Uh, essentially the, the letter that we got, uh, from the province, one of the things that's changing in there is they're now allowing for a deferred payment until occupancy uh, for some classes of residential development, uh, that weren't otherwise eligible for such deferred payments uh, under the previous, uh, legislation in that regard. So more specifically, and, and not to be so cryptic, um, if you're wanting to build a new single detached home, uh, you now have the option, my understanding is to pay it upfront or you can pay it at the time of occupancy. Uh, these were changes that were enacted through Bill seventeen and, and then formally, uh, put into effect as of November third of this year. So we're working with, um, municipal treasurers, municipal CBOs and planners to understand what that means and how that gets tracked, particularly at the municipal level. We've actually just scheduled an education session on this with, with somebody from Hempson presenting on December fourth to help fill us in on this. Um, it's my understanding that our current development charges exemption agreements for rental housing would still be uh, online with the new changes because the new changes tended to impact other types. Um, but my understanding through talking to our legal services staff, and this is where I defer to Lacey, is there might be some changes specifically with respect to how we register such agreements. Uh, but to go any deeper into that, I'd need somebody smarter than I am.
Counselor Bourdignolle, please.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Deputy Warden and through you to Mr. Taylor Scott. In relation to, you were just speaking, um, we're, do this in phases, which is, I, I think is a good idea, but to Counselor Nielsen's first question to the deputant in regards to the attainable, we always work with the words attainable or affordable. The provincial policy statement states it should be around twenty percent. When we're looking at a review or for the next phases, do we wait? Will we wait that heavier in or do we wait for recommendations from the province to, to match the PPS of approximately twenty percent to make it not just market, but, uh, at the eighty percent level?
Thank you for your question, uh, Counselor Bourdignolle. Um, that's a tricky one as well. So there's been some, some changes to the DC, uh, Act over the years. And, and there are thresholds, uh, for DCs, excuse me, for both rental and ownership. Um, whereby if, if they meet those affordability thresholds, then they simply don't need to pay the DCs. Uh, again, it requires a, a similar agreement on title to, to say that you need to maintain that. You know, it can't be just at the time of your building permits that you meet that. Um, so if, strictly speaking, if they were affordable based on the, the provincial definition, then they wouldn't need to, um, enter into this type of exemption agreement with the county because they'd be exempt provincially, so to speak. Um, if we wanted to get into as part of the development charges review, a further discussion on attainability or some other, um, threshold beyond sort of that provincial affordability limit, I think we'd really want to consult heavily with, with the development charges consultant and legal at the time. Uh, the province has talked about, you know, further definition of attainability and there's been some speculation that that might be more of a modular unit. Um, but we don't have a specific definition at county level or at the provincial level just yet for what attainability is. Um, yeah, I think I'll probably leave there for now unless there's any further clarification.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Not seeing any questions, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Scott. Okay, going back to the start of our direction and discussion. Um, Bill sixty, uh, Fighting Delays in Building Faster Act, that is, um, a report from Scott Taylor. So I need a mover and seconder to, to, uh, Counselor Dickert and Counselor Carlton. Scott, floor is yours, sir.
Great, I'll just, um, mic controlling Brittany or you? Sorry, I was just talking to Brittany about the slides. My apologies. Excellent, thank you. All right, um, uh, thank you again. Uh, so this, this All right, thank you again. So this this report, and apologize, there wasn't a report based on the timelines here. But this presentation really was a team effort in this regard. Maybe we'll just go to the next slide here. So Bill 60 is is another one of the provinces omnibus bills in this regard. And some of you would have gotten a sneak peek at elements of this presentation last week. For those of you that attended the Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee, I promise this will be a much better presentation this time because we have both Nile and Chair and also speaking to elements of it, so you won't just have to listen to me, so it'd be great. So so again, this is this is an omnibus bill. It touches on a number of different functions that the county's done in this regard. And so in pulling together these slides and and in pulling together some potential county comments on this bill, it's involved climate change staff, transportation services staff, finances, finance staff, community services, the CAO and deputy legal services. So it it really is a team effort and and certainly value the the collaboration in that regard. We also, as I said, heard some feedback from the Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee last week. I know within our own professional networks, a number of us are consulting to to hear what others are are saying and thinking in this regard. And in that in that aspect, we had a local planners meeting this this past Friday morning where we dug into this further. As with any large provincial change, there's 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 some good changes, there's some positive elements that staff would be quite excited about if this were to take effect. There's some that that we definitely have concerns with. And there's some where where we're simply, it's simply unknown as to what the impacts could be at this time. I would say, and it it leads into our discussion we just had on development charges, sort of the speed of change and the frequency of change is is really difficult to to continually adapt to and and adjust to in that regard. Not just reviewing the the draft legislation, but then starting to relearn elements of your job as as those changes take effect. And and they don't all take effect at the same time. So, you know, you suddenly find out, okay, well, November 3rd is the deadline for this, and now we've got to figure out what this means. So so I will say, and and certainly not looking for sympathy or anything else in this regard, but, you know, we want to be partners with the province. We want to continue to work with the province to to achieve their objectives because many of their objectives match very closely with with county council's state of objectives. But if if there could be at at sometimes maybe just a brief slowdown in the change to adjust and catch up, that would certainly be very appreciated in that regard. I will finally also say that that there are a number of legislative changes that have been directly announced through Bill 60. And then there's some further changes that aren't actually changes to the legislation, but associated consultations of of topics that the province wants to look further into. And and some of those consultations were teased back in the spring or or were first thought of back in the spring when we had Bills 5 and Bill 17 in that regard. And and so the province is is picking up on some of the threads that that they had that started back then. With respect to some of the changes that that impact sort of the planning and development portfolio, I think maybe the one that I'm personally most excited about is is there's a proposal in place that the province would allow all upper-tier municipalities the ability to offer community improvement plans. For those of you that might not live and breathe this on a daily basis, if prior to this change, this proposed change, only a select few prescribed upper-tier municipalities had the ability to offer community improvement plans. So Gray County wasn't in that prescribed list. Gray, Bruce and Simco have all been talking to provincial staff and asking the province, you know, could could we have the ability to offer such a community improvement plan? And so if this change were to go through, then it would give county council the ability, if they saw fit, to to direct staff to work on preparing a community improvement plan. And and through that plan, we could really target specific county initiatives. And and so one of those might be further sort of incentives or or policies on on affordable housing in that regard or attainable housing in that regard. So this is one of the changes that that kudos to the province. This would would make a direct impact locally across the province. Some of the other changes they're consulting on have to do with streamlining the land use planning and building permit application processes. At our local planners meeting this this past Friday, this was a big topic of discussion. We actually had a few chief building officials in in the in attendance as well, so it was great to hear their perspective in that regard. And I think we'd all agree any process can always be streamlined. We can do better, for sure. There's there's no doubt about that. Some of what the province is looking at here is looking at the use of technology to to streamline those processes. So maybe a a further reliance on on artificial intelligence in that regard. They're also looking at maybe using common metrics or platforms for data tracking. So, you know, I think there are elements that could be very positive here. I think with respect to this one, we just want to make sure that, you know, if if there were major changes in that regard that they're they're phased in or or people have enough runway to adjust. Or similarly, if the province does say we're going all to a common platform, and let's just say they're going to a a common software platform in that regard. Having respect for the costs and time it takes to change over in that regard. So if there was provincial funding available to help with that transition, if there is to be a transition, that would certainly be appreciated. One of the other changes that the province is talking about is is consulting through the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing to have a common framework or common platform for official plans. Apparently, what what provincial staff and and politicians have been hearing is that official plans have have gotten too large and too unruly and too specific in that regard. So they'd like to offer some provincial guidance there whereby we might be able to have a standard across the province. One of the things they've shared in the the Environmental Registry posting is what could perhaps be a a standardized table of contents in that regard. Certainly, that's something that the Ontario Provincial Planners Institute has has been trying to work closely with the province on to put forward something that would meet the needs of the province and address the needs of of planners across the province. There are some, again, some abilities to streamline in that regard. One of the other things that the province has has stated here is they'd like to see official plans being more permissive and 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 perhaps less overall land use designations in that regard. Within those standardized table of contents, we've heard comments locally that there's there's not specific comments related to either health and communities or climate change in that regard. Maybe, maybe, maybe those are two topics that are just pervasive and and go through, you know, all the different sections of the plan, but certainly those are are two very big topics that we'd like to see considered in that regard. The one other thing I'd say here is is that one of the other things the province is also throwing out as part of this potential consultation is just a a a maximum page limit for official plans. And and, you know, you can maybe draw your own conclusions on that regard. We think, you know, there's room for some standardization, but maybe that page limit is is a tough one. You know, arguably, and and not to pick on anyone here, but the Town of Hanover official plan and the City of Toronto official plan probably don't need to be the same number of pages. And and I don't think specifically a number of our Gray County official plans were were sort of, you know, oh, unruly in that regard, but, you know, we can, we can sharpen our pencils. One of the other things we've worked on locally here in terms of that streamlining is the fact that we are in a two-tier municipal government system. Where can we find ways not to say things twice? And so if it's already in the county plan, you know, we don't potentially need to restate that in a municipal official plan. And municipalities have been wonderful at at working together in that regard. Some of the other changes they're looking at would be prohibiting the requirement for green roof or other roof surfaces bylaw. Certainly in the press, this has drawn a lot of attention and and they've specifically noted the city of Toronto's green roof bylaw in that regard. We don't have any such bylaws like that in place in Gray County. And and the province has specified that they would be prohibited prohibiting the mandatory use. But if if developers still wanted to build to those those standards, then of course they could in that regard. They're also looking at making changes to the minister zoning order process whereby they'd no longer need to be passed by a regulation. And and so the province could could potentially pass those in a more expedient fashion. For those of you that weren't at the Planning and Economic Development Advisory Committee, Counselor Nielsen asked a wonderful question in that regard that I still haven't been able to find the answer to. But essentially, his his question, if I can restate it, was along the lines of if you have a minister zoning order that's in place and and if it gets put in place not through regulation, is it easier to then amend if you need some local flexibility in that regard? And and so, you know, in terms of the most recent minister zoning orders in the county, we had three in Southgate a few years ago. And and I know there's there's pros and cons to those, but one of the challenges is once the the minister zoning order is put in place by regulation, it's not as simple as just amending your zoning bylaw anymore through municipal council. Suddenly, it 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 means going back to the province in that regard. So one of the the questions here that we'd be asking through these comments is if this is enacted, no longer needing regulations, would there be further flexibility post MZOs being in place to look at changes in that regard? Speaking of MZOs, one of the further changes they're looking at, and and they talked about this back in the spring too, is potentially carving out an exception such that the minister's decision would no longer need to be consistent with the provincial planning statement or provincial plans in this regard. They noted that this would allow the ministry more flexibility to act nimbly on minister zoning orders or even the approval of official plans. You can probably guess this didn't land real well with the planners. We like our rules. And and no doubt there needs to be some flexibility, but but if if the province is is the one sort of setting these rules at a provincial level through documents like the provincial planning statement or provincial plans, then it sort of feels like we should, we should all be singing from the same songbook in that regard. So staff did have some concerns in that regard. There was also a change looked at, looking at reducing the use of record, reducing the use of records of site condition in those situations where there's low potential for contamination. In terms of some of the other changes, again, this is one that was was talked about last spring. They've talked about regulation-making authority for the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing whereby there could be, it could reduce the need for minor variances where someone's looking at a variance within a prescribed percentage. They've specifically talked about this on urban residential lands, but, you know, one, one example could be, you know, if your if your front yard setback is is six meters and and in your bylaw and someone's coming in at, you know, 5.8 or something, maybe that's within that threshold that it could just automatically be approved. I think there's pros and cons here, you know, there is, there is some benefit to some flexibility. But in some cases, those setbacks were put in place for a very specific reason. Municipally, it might have to do with things like snow storage or municipal infrastructure or other such things. So the ability to still have some municipal say in that regard would certainly be be appreciated. They've also talked about a new section-by-section review of the building code to eliminate inefficiencies while protecting safety. Some of you might be aware, there were major changes to the building code that just took effect earlier this year. In terms of talking to the few CBOs that we did, they noted, you know, again, similar to the official plans, there's always room for for further streamlining and further efficiencies. But with the 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 past direction on on harmonizing the provincial and national building codes here, it begs the question about whether or not this this review would be solely focused on looking at the province of Ontario or whether this is moving us closer to that stated goal of of harmonizing the national and provincial building codes in that regard. They've also looked at more flexible permissions for allowing for on-farm septic systems for for farm worker housing in that regard. This would give greater authority to building officials to issue permits for for septic systems under the building code that previously would have required Ministry of the Environment approval for. This, on the face of it, seems to have some merit, but but the way they're proposing this right now is not necessarily that you'd be issuing a permit for a larger septic system, but rather you could issue permits for a number of distributed septic systems across the across the farm. So you could have up to five 10,000-liter systems, each on their own, 10-acre or four-hectare chunk of the farm. And so, you know, on the one hand, having more flexibility for farm worker housing, wonderful. On the other hand, you know, if we were going to have development on farm, I think from a land use planning perspective, we prefer that that development be relatively centralized and and not taking, say, farmland out of production at at various different corners and chunks of the farm. So I think that's something that we'd like to, you know, submit comments and work with the province on to to look at some some tweaks there and 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 of course, consult further with the building officials in that regard. There's also consultations on the the further use of of communal water and wastewater systems. Certainly, this is a topic that AMO has also been very interested in and doing some some work there as well. For those of you that aren't familiar, when you're going beyond five or six units on a single system, then it becomes a communal system. And under the current policies where you have those communal systems, developers aren't necessarily required to build to a municipal standard. But prior to approving those systems, the municipality needs to enter into a responsibility agreement, basically to say that if that system ever fails, then then they'll be on the hook for it. And and so you can imagine from a municipal risk and liability perspective, they don't want to see these systems built in a haphazard or or lower standard fashion. So, you know, a lot of times the municipality will say, yeah, we're fine with a communal system as long as you build it to a municipal standard. And the developer will say, there's no way I could ever afford to build it to a municipal standard, so it simply never gets built or or done. So the province is looking at streamlined processes for both municipal and provincial approvals on those communal systems. And this would be particularly to unlock development in some of our smaller villages and and hamlets and rural areas whereby you you wouldn't necessarily have a municipal water and wastewater treatment system. This isn't meant to replace those those treatment systems. It's meant to acknowledge the fact that the the financial output to install one of those treatment systems is is a is a barrier for some smaller communities in that regard. Similar to our discussion a few minutes ago, there's also further changes proposed to the development charges that would further limit the ability to include land costs as part of the the collectible development charge. They would standardize who pays what in terms of infrastructure. And and there's further transparency in reporting requirements, including the need to share a background study where requested by the ministry. And finally, I promise is my last point. They're also consulting on on the impact of enhanced lot-level requirements to improve sustainability. And essentially, what that means is is they want to look at those municipal requirements that they believe are driving up the cost of housing and being applied sporadically across the province. And and so what are those areas where we can, we can all agree that that maybe some tools are needed versus what are those other areas whereby maybe similar to the city of Toronto's green roof program, it becomes optional in that regard. And certainly, again, as the county, we want to work with the province in this regard. Some of what they've thrown out in the Environmental Registry posting is is definitely concerning to staff in that regard. They've talked about things like bicycle parking or requiring native planting. To staff, that's not something that necessarily adds a tremendous amount to a developer's performer in that regard. But it's 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 things that we've had enshrined in in both zoning bylaws, in the case of bicycle parking and and native planting requirements in our subdivision and site plan agreements for for many, many years now. And and it's it's not a tool that we'd we'd like to to lose in that regard. So again, you know, I think there's room for some scoping here, but from a staff perspective, and particularly in terms of looking at our longer-term sustainable future in that regard, some of these tools are very useful without without, you know, unduly harming development in that regard. So with that, I will turn it over to Nile, who's going to speak to some of the transportation elements.
Thank you very much, and through you, Deputy Warden. I told myself I should never follow Scott when it comes to doing a presentation. I will beat this relatively relatively brief as we go over the next few slides. Pat, I know, was desperately keen to be here today, but was unfortunately unable to attend. So I you have me instead, so I'm backup Pat. Transportation is one of the pieces that's bubbled up through through Bill 60. And I think the story for a lot of the transportation elements in there is we don't really understand the problem that the province is trying to fix for some of these. I think it'll be clear on the third one of these slides that we we know where the problem is. But certainly for some of these, we're not entirely sure the the rationale behind why the province is seeking to move some of these forward. And so we don't have much detail around what the potential outcome of some of these changes could be, or as I say, the reasons perhaps that they're driving at some of these things. So the first one that's in Bill 60 is harmonization of road standards. This is an interesting one because we already have technical guidelines which are well-adopted and have an extensive history across the province in terms of how roads are constructed. They're used by the counties' teams, they're used by municipal teams across Gray County. And they they are the OPSS and the the OPSD standards, which are already used when we're creating road standards for for consultants and contractors to be doing. So there there are commonly adopted standards across the engineering profession that are already in place, and so we're not entirely sure what the harmonization beyond those might be. It might be focusing on those standards, it might be introducing new standards or or refining the scope of those standards and bringing them into a provincial legislative context. We would suggest some caution needs to be applied to this. We like the flexibility to build roads as roads need to be built for the positions that they're in. And those conditions obviously vary widely across Gray County, across our member municipalities. More significantly, they vary very significantly across the province of Ontario. And so it's difficult to say, difficult to understand what harmonization of a road standard could be that is applicable to the far north as it is to urban Toronto. And so that's some concern around what harmonization could look like in that side of things. We already use a number of different standards to adopt to the drainage conditions, the soil conditions, the ground conditions of the various different roads that we look after. And so if that's something that we're looking after in a scale of a county, again, looking at what that would look like over a much broader area is something which would take some significant attention to. is something which would take some significant attention to. And also the ability of contractors to be able to respond to this. So we worked with a number of contractors who use a number of different asphalt plants. We specify the mixes that we require to meet our local conditions. And again, if this is harmonized across the province, what does that do from a contractor's perspective in regards to materials that we have, we have access to? The early indications on the harmonization suggests that there are some savings that that could be leveraged through this. We we're not able to see where those savings potentially could be gained at this point in time. And so really, this is a bit of a story. We really do need a lot more information before we can come to a position of whether or not harmonization is something which should be welcomed or or express some concern about. There are a couple of things that give us some cause for concern, specifically in regards to ministers being able to make regulations regarding municipalities and the contracts that we enter into and standardizing some of those. This, this does appear to be an extra layer. We have a well-developed procurement process at Gray County. Our member municipalities have their own procurement processes that we have in place. We have contractors that we've had relationships with over many years, and we welcome new contractors through through procurement process each year. This appears to be an extra layer that we don't understand the necessity for with the with the the procurement processes that we have in place at this time. And and the contracts that we're able to fall into. Now, this appears to be something that wouldn't have any merit for us the way we operate at this point in time. So again, not quite sure why this is coming forward, not quite sure what the value would be in terms of Gray County. I think we probably can guess where this one is coming from in terms of a provincial lens. Not something which has a massive impact on us on the surface in regards to the way in which we design our roads and the the requirement to not eliminate travel lanes for traffic to make active transportation lanes for cycling infrastructure. However, the 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 guidelines that we operate under allow for us to look at road design on an as-needed basis. And so the the inference of this, this sort of regulation within Bill sixty, this this element of Bill sixty would be to limit or restrict the ability of the municipality to design a road as it's needed for the area it is in. And so at times, as you'll see on the slide, putting a road on a diet is a good thing to do. The use of that road may have changed, the desire for the need of the use of that road may have changed over times. It may not be that we specifically wish to introduce a cycling rain lane, but it might be that there's more space required for active in active transportation infrastructure to support pedestrians. It might be that we're looking to amend turning lanes, reduce or increase road lane widths. And so the scope of this legislative change that's being proposed in in Bill sixty, if it's defined very much to just cycling infrastructure, might not be something that has a big impact. But there is some concern that the way in which this is worded would restrict the ability of a municipality to be able to design a road for the best situation, the best the best design for the circumstances and situation that we we have the road in. And that takes me to the last slide where we can offer a little bit of a glimpse into some good news stuff. So the the ability to reduce some of the waste time wait times regarding working eligibility criteria is something that we we generally support. It's not specific to transportation, but it is something which across the board would be something that would be generally supported. And and looking at the Lean Act is something that we're we're always interested in. However, we would, we would caveat this with, we don't want more paperwork on terms of this one. This one works reasonably well as is. And so so again, no need for more paperwork when it comes to the leads. And I will wrap up at that. And hopefully there will be no questions. If they are, Mr. Taylor would be happy to take them.
Thank you, Scott and Nile. Sharon.
Thank you. I wanted to start with just a little bit of background information on the landlord tenant board and the Residential Tenancies Act. For those of you who don't live and read the legislation like we do in housing. The landlord tenant board is one of thirteen Ontario adjudicative tribunals. It is the busiest of all of the tribunals in Ontario, and it is acting on the authority under the Residential Tenancies Act. And that is the piece of legislation that makes the framework of relationships between landlords and tenants. They receive approximately on average eighty one thousand applications in a calendar year, which means that they would have to hear three hundred tribunals a day in order to be able to keep up with the the amount of tribunals that they have. Approximately twenty percent of those tribunals are withdrawn ahead of time. Eleven percent are mediated and the rest go in front of an adjudicator. The adjudicator is a role in Ontario that is allowed and under the authority of the Residential Tenancies Act to be the only person to legally terminate a tenancy in Ontario and issue an order of eviction. The sheriff position is the only position in Ontario that can execute that order. So Bill sixty has proposed a few changes legislatively in order to try and help the landlord and tenant board to catch up on their their backlog as well as incentivize incentivize would be landlords who are sitting on vacant properties to try and have confidence in the system and rent out those properties. We agree with some of the things that they've put forward. We are very concerned about others. And so we are looking at this from a very balanced perspective. So the first change that they're proposing is to reduce the amount of time that parties have to request a review of an order to the landlord tenant board from thirty to fifty day or fifteen days. So what that is, is if there is a critical error to your order. So for example, a landlord receives an order for eviction, but they whoever typed it out put the wrong unit number. And they don't appeal that within fifteen days, they could face starting over at the at the beginning. If a tenant receives a notice of eviction for rental arrears and the math is incorrect. Again, if they don't catch it within the fifteen days, it could end up going to an appeal process. So on paper, it does look as though this may shorten time, but what it will really do is open the door to more appeals and more landlords having to start from scratch. Limiting new issues that can be raised at the time of a landlord tenant board hearing. That is something that is allowed to happen for evictions that are happening for non-payment of rent. And what the province is saying is that they will allow tenants to bring forward any of their maintenance concerns if the tenant pays fifty percent of the rental arrears upfront. And what that's going to do is it's going to create a two-tier system between the haves and the have-nots. It'll put additional strain on some of our most vulnerable populations. What it is intended to do is equalize the playing field. So right now, as a landlord, if we go to tribunal, which is what we are as as Gray County Housing, we follow the same rules and legislations as any other landlord. A tenant can bring forward maintenance concerns without any advance notice to us. And then we don't have time to prepare a defense, and so we ask for an adjournment, which causes delays. When you are going to tribunal for a behavioral issue, all parties are expected to prepare their evidence and bring forward what it is that they're going to discuss seven days in advance. So we would propose that that same rule would apply to non-payment of rent hearings to equalize the playing field and ensure that everybody has an opportunity to bring forward their concerns. Shortening the rental arrears eviction notice from fourteen to seven days. Again, looks good on paper, but won't make a hair of difference if the procedural issues that are happening at the landlord tenant board are not corrected. And if we go to get a sheriff and we don't have one, which has happened numerous, a number of times in the last three years in Gray County. We've had sheriffs that are are go off for various reasons, and then we have to borrow from other regions, which means our sheriff is only available to us maybe once or twice a month. So again, you could have an order in hand, but then not be able to execute it. Creating authority to set out circumstances or conditions for a set aside. So a set aside is essentially a request for a second hearing. And we agree that sometimes this gets abused. Sometimes tenants will say that they didn't know that there was a hearing, and so they will request a second one, and it will be granted. And we agree that there needs to be more transparency and more consistency as to when those are are implemented, because right now there's no real rhyme or reason from our perspective as to why one adjudicator will say yes and another adjudicator will say no. We also think, though, that before this would be implemented, it needs to be done with deep collaboration with landlord landlord groups, tenant groups and municipalities. Because if any of this legislation fails. Sitting next to Josh, I will hear all about how the Sustainable Housing Benefit and the Short Term Shelter Program has to pick up where this leaves us. Increasing enforcement resources, we are absolutely for this. That would mean hiring more sheriffs, and we will advocate that Gray County will be one of the ones to get a sheriff and advocating that these will be permanent positions and not temporary ones. Increasing access to decisions or orders. I must say I'm a little bit confused by this one because you already can access orders. Landlords, anybody, they're they're public information. Anyone can attend a tribunal. In fact, any landlord should in order to learn the nuances of being in a tribunal. And anyone can Google and search up orders, they're they're public knowledge. So I'm not really sure what that is, other than making the public aware that they can do something that's already available to them. Simplified language in the LTV documents. We agree that they do need to be simplified. However, the landlord tenant board also just revamped their website and made it much more confusing. So we're not really sure how well of a job they're going to do with their forms. The forms do cause a lot of confusion as they are right now. And in both big bold letters across the front of the page, there's a statement that says something along the lines of this form could lead you to eviction, and nobody ever reads the second page with the fine print as to what they need to do next. And I cannot change the slides. You able to change slide? There we go. So they want to create authority to consider factors and limits under which an adjudicator could consider postponing an eviction. This usually is a human rights matter. Part of the legislation that is impacting landlords at the LTV is lack of knowledge of human rights legislation. We are expected to know and understand our responsibilities under the Human Rights Act as well. And so what this would do is we do agree again that there's inconsistency. It seems that the adjudicator you get will determine what they will take into considering what they won't. So these are usually compassionate reasons. So this is where a landlord gets the eviction, but they won't tell the person they have to be out within days. They'll tell the person they have to be out within maybe two or three months, and it could be because of illness. It could be because of kids wrapping up school. It could be because of a number of of different compassionate type reasons. So we agree there needs to be clarity and consistency, but again, with some really deep consultation with municipalities and landlord and tenant groups. They are looking at removing compensation requirements for landlords' own-use evictions and no longer needed where the landlord gives a hundred and twenty days notice. We are against this. This doesn't affect us as Gray County Housing. However, when a tenant is evicted for own use, they're being evicted for no fault of their own. They're often having to move into housing that is more expensive than the housing that they're leaving, and they have to incur cost of moving. So we think it's only fair that they receive some sort of restitution to help them with that process. And consulting on alternative options for when lease agreements expire. The government has since noted that they will not be pursuing this, and we're in support of that. So tribunals are equipped and expected to make decisions that have real impact in people's lives. And we agree and advocate that those those decisions should be fair and they should be transparent and they should be consistent. And the the ombudsman's office did a report. I'm not sure how many of you are aware of that, but in twenty eighteen was when the issues with the LTV began. And it in twenty eighteen, there was a large number of complaints that went to the ombudsman's office. In the beginning of twenty nineteen, right before COVID, they launched an investigation. Then there were two rental moratoriums during COVID, which exacerbated the issues. The ombudsman's office has put forward sixty one recommendations, procedural recommendations to clean up the consistencies or lack thereof within the board and the decisions that they make. And the LTV has to respond to the ombudsman's office every six months with updates as to how they're doing. We are in support of chasing that process as when you read the report. You can see that a lot of the recommendations that are made are direct reflections of the experiences we're having. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Sharon. Are there any questions from council? Councilor Greg.
Two questions. Ms. Irwin did a great job, but my first question goes circle back to Nile. I did have one question. And then a follow-up for Sharon. A couple of years ago, I believe it was Sudbury was named under joint and several liability as part of a construction project accident on site, and this caused municipalities a tremendous amount of grief. Within the changes proposed in the Highway Traffic Act component, is there any recognition to supporting municipalities' positions which were an outcome of that and the extra responsibilities and costs that were sustained?
Can I get back to you on that one? Through you Deputy Warden, I am aware of the aware of the situation in Sudbury. I had, I had a recollection that had been dealt with in another piece of legislation that had happened, but I knew I would need to circle back with Eagle to get an answer to you. I will go back to you.
Okay, thank you, Nile. Did you have another question? Go ahead.
Thank you. And the slide has went past me. It could have been the second last slide or the the last slide, the hundred and twenty days notice for own use. Sharon, you mentioned it doesn't really apply, I think, to the county was your comment, but we were going to submit comments opposed to that. And I'm questioned further why we would submit comments opposed to that. I think of the, an individual, a family who might have a semi-detached. They're renting out the other unit in their semi-detached, and so a family member loses a job. They own the building. They should have some significant rights about who's going to occupy that building. And I'm I'm wondering, what is it further here that the county should be positioning as communication to further support that individual? Because I know where that, any monetary remuneration, I know where it's coming from. It's coming from the person who owns that building, that duplex. What are we looking for further here that when we're not actually players in the game?
So through you Chair, we're looking at it because we sit on sort of a threshold of both the landlord for Gray County Community Housing. We also operate programs such as the Sustainable Housing Benefit, which will have a trickle-down effect on those types of programs for moving costs and last month's rent. So we're looking at it as as a full picture of protecting the tenants from having to come and access resources when it is of no fault of their own that they're being evicted. Not to say that I disagree with you absolutely. If a person owns a property, then and they're entitled to move into it and have that eviction one hundred percent. Our argument is that to protect additional resources, having to pick up the slack because it is a a no-fault eviction and because it will incur costs on the person who's having to move. We feel that it should be, there should still be a monetary tie.
So can we construct a correlation to increasing supply in the marketplace? Because that's a significant driver, and that's been the problem in the last several years is there's been no supply. So if if we can get back to a supply ratio of eight or 10% vacant market units, then we're going to see those prices come down, and we're going to see relief corporately then, potentially in those those rents as well.
And through you Chair, I don't disagree at all. I think that we also need to see a increase in specific housing. We have a a large number of the population who don't thrive in traditional housing and require more supports, and we have members of our population who require medical level housing. So we need an increase in all levels of housing in order to meet that demand.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mackey.
Thank you Deputy Warden, and through you to us, Mr. Taylor. Scott, you mentioned in one of your slides consultation and the ministry is doing consultation, the government's doing consultation in regards to communal wastewater and water systems. I'm only familiar in our municipality in campgrounds where they have communal water and wastewater. So I was a little, you know, taken back about the responsibility lying on the municipality when they fail. Is the province looking at expanding the use of communal wastewater and water systems? And will the municipalities have any right of refusal or not if we end up bearing the responsibility? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Warden. Thanks for your question, Counselor Mackey. Our understanding from the consultation materials and what we've seen through through AMO and Western Ontario Wardens is is the province is looking for a way to be more permissive of those communal systems. Certainly, I think municipalities are in a gentle way pushing back to say, you know, fair enough, we all need to do our part in terms of increasing housing supply. But that risk element is not to be underestimated. And so in the consultation materials associated with this legislation, they they've talked about further consultation. And and they've talked about streamlined municipal and provincial approvals. But we don't have sort of that criteria yet on what that streamlining would be. Certainly from a staff perspective, we're happy to take direction from council if there is. If there is strong feelings on, on that responsibility agreement element or how we could frame that to the province to have a constructive conversation.
Thank you, Scott. Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you. And through you, Deputy Warden to Mr. Taylor. And in general, I had written down the Ontario Western Municipal Conference and where we had heard about this communal water and wastewater system, I attended that workshop and the concern of, you know, a communal water and wastewater system being constructed not to municipal standards. It always reminds me of the, you know, this is the 25th anniversary year of the Waukatoon tragedy. We seem to be, you know, loosening the regulations. We establish municipal water systems and regulations to prevent that from ever happening again. So I have, I, I trust that our commenting will be to remind the province of the importance of a standard to be upheld. And the concern that if it's not built to our standard, then we can't assume the risk. That is, was, is more of a comment and an expression of stressing that point. If I may, I have one other comment. Throughout this presentation, with all due respect to Toronto, I probably heard Toronto referenced four times or more. If we could convey to the province that one size does not fit all, and when did we lose sight of the importance of taking a rural lens? Our geography, our infrastructure, our environment is very different. And painting us with the same brush to our more urban sister municipalities is, is a challenge for us. So thank you for the presentation. It, it was excellent and really did open my eyes to everything that is being downloaded on us. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, you want to comment? Counselor Hope, go ahead.
There we go. Thank you, Counselor Masky. This question through you, Mr. Warden is to, is to Mr. Taylor. I note with concern that unfortunately Gray County was not included in having access to the CIP program. I find that to be unfortunate because that is such an excellent mechanism for affordable attainable housing. Could you tell us, give us, you know, your perspective on why Gray was not on that list? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Deputy Warden. It's a good question, Counselor Hope. I'm not entirely sure. So years ago, sort of when I started my career in planning, it was only lower tiers or single tiers that could offer community improvement plans. And then the provinces made change, changes to the act, I don't know, 10-ish years ago. It feels like it was a blink, but it was probably 10 years. And, and they, they allowed for prescribed upper tiers to offer community improvement plans. And where those prescribed upper tiers could offer those community improvement plans, it wasn't on the same breadth that a, a lower tier or single tier municipality could offer those plans on. So housing was one of those things that, that specifically those upper tiers could speak to in that regard. And, and so, you know, flashback to 2017 or 18, that's why Gray, working with our partners in economic development, tourism and culture, came up with the, the community improvement plan template program, program whereby it would still be a municipal CIP, but the county would, would help do some of the heavy lifting in terms of establishing those CIPs and, 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 and flow some money through as well. More recently, through some staff reports from, from Liz Buckton, and she actually had a further report drafted just before Bill 60 was announced. Again, asking the province to, to allow upper tiers who aren't prescribed to be able to offer this. It was one of those things that, you know, as, as a county staff person, we kind of scratched our head at, you know, what, what harm was there to the province if the municipalities at an upper tier level wanted to flow money into certain programs? So it seemed like kind of one of those low hanging fruit ones. So we're super thankful that the province is now considering this, but I don't have a great answer for you as to, you know, why it wasn't done earlier in that regard.
Follow up, please. So is, is there an opportunity with Roma delegations, you know, maybe AMO to take this further and to save out accessing this, this program?
Through you, Deputy Warden. Certainly, we're happy to take any direction from council. In, in the draft legislation right now, that is included. And, and so if, if the legislation were to pass as per the draft, then, then there'd sort of be no need for further lobbying in that regard, if you will. If it's something that council feels strongly about, we want to make our, our voices heard with groups like AMO or Roma or, or Western Ontario Wardens, certainly happy to put that forward. You know, Liz has still got her draft report and, and we were just kind of chewing over, do we still bring something forward? Do we not? But I think from a staff perspective, we're just kind of eagerly waiting to see what passes here and, and, and if it does pass as, as drafted, then there might not be the need for any further advocacy in that regard.
Okay, thank you for the question. Counselor McQueen.
I'll be quick. Just following up with Counselor DeBreen. Standardizing one road system design and like in the problem material, I'm sure Pat would add more to that. We have what they call weather issues. So a road design in North Bay might be different than a road that's designed in Mississauga. More recently, just we had a Gray County Federation of Ag meeting last night. The concern is, is designing roads for large agriculture equipment. Now you're not going to devise something in Mississauga, I didn't say Toronto, but you were maybe designed differently in Gray County, Bruce County or a rural part. And I think that's so important about the rural lens. I think that should be one of our comments back is that rural lens.
Yep, agreed. Any other? Just one observation I made was from Scott's comments about the limitation in the number of pages for an official plan. I believe it was Winston Churchill during the war when he was prime minister insisted that any report that landed on his desk was one page. So I, there may be some merit to it. Just saying, just saying. Not picking on planning, but just saying. Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you to Scott, Sharon and Nile for that stretchy report. Report number. You, really? Lunch is going to be here in half an hour. All right, let's recess for five minutes. One minute warning. I think we have quorum back. We'll bring the meeting back to order. Counsel, it has been brought to my attention that there is some interest in the gallery regarding report number seven F or item number on the agenda. Would counsel be obliging to move that up to do that now prior to lunch? Anyone objecting? Seeing no objection, we'll proceed with item seven F, which is and here I thought you were all being entertained with our deliberations prior to, prior to now. You'll be back next week, I'm sure, to see you at the next meeting. In any case, we're going to deal with the Budget and Finance Committee minutes dated October 29th. Mary Lou is going to speak to them. So Mary Lou, the floor is yours and welcome. I mean, a mover and seconder, sorry. Counselor DeBreen and Counselor Greg, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Budget and Finance met on October 29th and the, the primary focus of the meeting was 10-year capital forecast. Corporate capital funding needs for 2026 as presented were $21,117,500. And that's an increase of $3,032,200 higher than the net capital funding that was in the 2025 approved forecast. The increase to the capital levy in 2026 is largely driven by approximately $2.9 million with the impacts in transportation services, paramedic services and housing portfolios. The increase we just talked about was, there was an increase set aside for asset management totaling $1,748,100. One million, just shy of 1.4 million is a levy increase. And the remainder of 348,800 was from the OCAIF allocation. There's an increase of 129,300 to the transfer to the Affordable Housing Reserve. Included as presented earlier in the year, $1,240,900 funded from the levy for the Road Exchange Project. An increase of $146,800 to fund debentures for paramedic service based builds. As part of the presentation, each department provided an overview of their capital forecasts with emphasis on years one and three, and anything that was new or changed was identified and they responded to questions from committee. After the presentations, committee recommended two adjustments to the 2026 budget and 2027 proposed budget that are reflected in the minutes from the meeting. As the minutes from this meeting have not been approved by council, the adjustments have been noted but not incorporated in the draft budget that will be discussed on December 5th and 12th. And the final meeting topic was the review of the 2025 Capital Project Status Update Report based on August 31st internally produced financial statements. And it was noted that there were 259 capital projects. Stats were shared on procurement status and project status. The status can be different if, for example, the procurement has been completed, such as awarding an ambulance, but it, there are delays in receiving the ambulance due to supply chain. And happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mary Lou. And as you indicated, just to be clear, regardless of what we do with the minutes today, they are recommendations to the draft budget. So there is an opportunity to change through the budget deliberations. But nonetheless, if there's changes to be requested or questions, let's have them. Counselor Nielsen, please.
Just a first question, our first comment, I guess. Because of the recommendations that are being made here to this body came from a smaller committee. I would like to move that we split the question. Some of the questions have specific requests that are being removed. Others are different directions for future budgets. So I'd like to split the question so we can vote on them individually.
Okay, you want to?
Okay, you want to move, you're moving that we split each motion separately and vote on each motion separately, or do you wish one or two to come out?
Just for the premise of one or two that might be voted on separately and amendments that might be made, split the question, have the, I think there's six different recommendations coming out of here. Some of them will be pretty quick motions, others might take more conversation.
Fair enough. Is there a second or for that motion to split the question? Counselor Carrollton, thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Greg?
Is that including lost motions? Because those also show in the minutes.
I'm going to ask clerk on that one. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, and my apologies to counsel and the public. We did have a bit of a glitch when we were posting our revised agenda. I don't know exactly when it happened, but some of you may have seen those motions that were lost, and some of you may have not seen them at all. The ones that are intended to be considered here today and that are on the floor do not include those lost motions. They're only the ones that were voted and supported at the committee level, and they should be showing correctly on your escribe packages and on your website, on the website now.
So that would entail six, not the ones that are lost. Is that okay? Any other questions on the amendment to split the questions? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. So we'll consider the first, which is that the reevaluated for opportunities to scope reductions and that information be provided on the cost of the project. Is there a mover and secondor for that motion? Sorry? We don't, okay, we just need to vote out. We don't need a mover and secondor. Any discussion on that particular motion? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. The second one is the paramedic services base in eight and be deferred to the 2027 budget. Any discussion? Counselor Nielsen?
Just a quick comment on this one. I do think that there's some logic to this deferral. We are adding the Dundalk Paramedic Base. That was a surprise cost. I think this is a reasonable change in the, in the plan of the paramedic services as we're trying to, you know, we're making the same amount of investment into paramedic services, just maybe changing the location based upon necessity now. So I think this is a very logical addition.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further questions? Counsel Boarder Neil?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Through you, in the same vein, I do have a question, though. Does, does this, in the minutes, talking about Fever Sham, Thornberry, and the other bases in Cobble Beach, is, does that affect the moving the one out or deferral? Does that do a domino effect?
Mary Lou?
For you, Mr. Deputy Warden. It, we did look, and I'll, I'll look to Kevin. We did talk about moving that you would only have so many bases.
Kevin, maybe you want to comment, please?
The discussion was that we're building Fever Sham and Dundalk. It's ongoing right now, so we do have a number of bases in the project scope right now. So we did talk about, you know, because of that and probably best, and we also have the deployment review happening next year with budget approval, that those type of recommendations will go forward. So the, the talk was is that eight would be deferred till 2027, but there wasn't really any talk about moving anything further out. But again, we could look at the comprehensive deployment review to help best guide us next year.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Number three, that funding for the Experimental Acres project in the amount of $28,000 be removed from the draft 2026 budget. Discussion? Counsel McQueen?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I did pull the, I think it was 6P that talked about what the Ag Services and Mark Dill do in one of those pages, and there everybody, it'll factor, it did talk about the Experimental Acres. And pardon the pun, but a little bit of seed money goes a long way to developing ways of resilience. We know we're dealing with climate change, and a lot of those experimental projects are based on small funding that create big results. And I'll use an example of what 2025 years ago, no telling how that changed a lot of things in our practices. So I would say that this should be something that should be left in the budget.
Okay, thank you. Counsel DeBreen?
Thank you, and through you to Mary Lou and to the minutes. My understanding was that this is a recommendation to remove the item from the 2026 budget, but that it would still show as having been removed, so we don't lose sight of it. And it would then be up to the committee, the whole, and council to determine what goes in and what stays out on our December 5th and 12th deliberations, if you could confirm that. Right now, it's just going to kind of sit in, in limbo for us to determine. And through you, Mr. Deputy Warden, because of the timelines that this meeting was October 29th, the minutes come here today, and they will not be passed by county council until November 27th. But there was the decision made that because counsel hasn't approved the minutes, everything that an adjustment was requested has remained in the budget because we didn't have counsel's approval in order to make those adjustments. So when you see the package comes out for December 5th and 12th, it will contain the Aitken base still for 2026, and it will contain the Experimental Acres for 28,000.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Greg?
Thank you, and I do have some comments, and I'm awarded five minutes to make them in the procedural bylaws, so let me know if I get the five minutes, but I think I'll just be under that. This was my motion, so I'm glad to speak to it, and I'm just going to go back to an email I received in September 22nd, 2023. As a retired farmer now living in Georgian Bluffs, I was a charter member of Burlington Sustainable Development Committee and a member of Conservation, the Halton Board of Directors. I was named Halton Region Conservationist of the Year in 1886, so I am not anti, anti-green. Goes on through a plethora of different initiatives that this individual has invested in their own property. And it concludes fiscal sustainability is a stranger to our governments. And I read that because of all the emails which we've received from the local climate action teams, and I'm thankful for all the work that they do, but it's very easy to send emails to counsel. In fact, I was surprised how quickly that the emails started coming in after the budget meeting. It was somewhat unusual. One of the premises of the farm race tax ratio being a quarter point is because it uses no services effectively. So now it's starting to, how about we look at increasing that tax ratio from a quarter point back up to 30 points or 40 points and see what that does for the tax base across the county? Because it sounds like it is starting to use services. It's starting to use bigger road construction. It's starting to use sustainable practices, seed funding. There's a company out there called Bear. And one of the companies they own is Decal. It's in their best interests, no different than it's in the best interests of every company that I deal with in my own business, where carbon footprint is actually stamped on some of the product. You can see what the impact is of the manufacturing in it. It's in Bear's best interests as a company to their shareholders to invest in research and development, which is why in Decal, they invest millions of dollars in seed resiliency and being able to adapt seeds to various climatic changes. This is a further step. My motion here, it doesn't eliminate one job. It impacts six people or six initiatives across the county in the year 2025. In terms of corresponding with different people, I have someone who's very talkative at the Katy livestock market, and in Gray County, you can't get much more involved with the the farming agricultural community than Katy. And I asked how many people brought up the topic of Experimental Acres in the last two weeks at the Katy Market, and the answer was zero. So we have next door to us a county that's looking at 4% tax increase, and they're looking to get down to 3.5% at Simcoe. We are at about 6.9%. We had projected last year for 2026, 4.97%. We're forecasting $1.6 million of growth, and we're at 6.87% coming out of that meeting. So if you vote against this, I do challenge my colleagues, please stand up after. Inform me of where you would like me to look on November 26th for further cuts, because that tax increase is not sustainable and on the shoulders of record growth that we've had as a county over the years. So we're on a trajectory that we have to change. So please inform me where I can further look for savings, because in the minutes, it does state every cut motion was Counselor Greg. That's on the record there. So just please inform me further, and we'll look to get that money down. But just to correct a little bit of the correspondence I received, it indicated that I was informed about Bill Gates's dialogue. It had nothing to do with it. If you watch the minutes or watch the video, my motion on this came before any conversation about Bill Gates, and I have never read his correspondence and frankly don't plan on doing so. This is about what's best for the county right now in the tough budget year. I get it. It's a, it's a great project, but it's one of many great projects that comes before the county. We had a great project a year ago from a lady at the southeast-southwest corner, and she had a youth center that she approached the county about funding. And they, they got funding from the province, which was wonderful, but we as a council didn't fund that initiative, and we as a council are looking at a tough budget year, and that's why we should not be funding this initiative this year. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Any other? Counsel McQueen?
Well, I must rebuttal, but start with, this program is ran through the Gray Ag Services, which basically runs on a shoestring budget, as we all know, and they do great jobs, great work. There's 156 meetings, 30 different groups that go through that Gray Ag Services office that use those facilities, and you talk about not knowing anything about it. The Gray Ag Services also has looked after Gray, the Farmers Week in January, which they have this year, six different, sorry, six different units or different days on different things around agriculture. I'm pretty sure they're going to be talking about this Experimental Acres at that, at that event. I will say that again, for the, for the discussion we are having here today on $28,000 of the, of the millions of dollars budget that we're going to be looking at. You know, where I see a place to cut is this download upload. That's where your big money is going to be affecting this budget, but we're not going to go there right now. I want to give you a small little example of something that I saw witnessing myself back in the early 2000s, where we had a lot of hot summers, and I had two properties, my own farm and my neighbor's farm, and my farm had 80 acres of no fence rows, and the neighboring farm was still the 10 acres. It was a hot summer. There was no second cut on my 80 acres, but there was second cut in those 10 acre fields. So this year in the Stewardship Gray Brews, we incentivize money for people, farmers, to plant trees back and create those fence rows, fence rows, or creating winds or barriers for the hot winds that dry out your land. So there's little wee things, and I go back to this Experimental Acres, that the little things that can come out of here successfully or not are small things that can, if they're successful, they can be communicated onto the farmers of Gray County and throughout. But if you don't know, if you don't try. So maybe there's opportunities for other sources of funding, but I think it's been quite successful. We had, at that Stewardship Gray Brews meeting I had a few weeks back, representatives from Gray Ag Services talked about this Experimental Acres, and I would say maybe, maybe they need to come to this body and talk a little bit more in depth of what they're doing to give a little bit of more insight of what they're doing. And I'm sure Lori would be quite happy to come here. But going back to the Ag Services, this is run under them, and they do an amazing job on the shoestring budget that they have, and they, they just can't figure out for a little bit of money how far this could go. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Any other, any other questions, discussion? Not, Counsel Pringle?
Yeah, thanks, sir. Deputy Warden, yeah, I'm, I'm a support behind, Counsel beside me here also on the two. The, the Gray Agro Services does such an amazing job with the little bit of funding that they get and working within the Gray County. I would like to see it maybe to be tweaked on how you get the grant money and how that's all, all done down the road, but I don't want to see the opportunity for it to disappear right off the, right off the budget. I think there is value there, and maybe needs to be tweaked on who we, who we allow to do what things. So as far as environmental or experimental goes, I did go through the list of what was done, and there's a few things I picked out there that maybe didn't really qualify in my mind as to being something that is, you know, actually needed as to be an experimental project, but I don't want to see it disappear. I think there's going to be some, there's valid information comes from that on small properties, whether it be five acres, two acres, one acre, to make a decision on possible benefits down the road. And it's part of it, it's part of agriculture. It's all part of it. We expand and change all the time. So I'm also in support of not removing it from the budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. Counselor Eccles, are you voting or are you asking for a question? Go ahead.
I was both much for questions. It would be a statement. It's not about Experimental Acres and Gray Agro Services. We support, we support the Gray Ag Services with housing, office space, quite a bit in that. I questioned strategically, how far do we go into these programs? If we're into supporting this program and distributing property taxpayers' money, where's the next? Or what's the precedent that it's set strategically? Is it Viking Sevays? An industry? Is it Thornberry Cideri? Where in it is this part of what Gray County should be going? How far outside of what we're here to do is this got? We've expanded tremendously. I was a farmer, and we did, you know, I had test plots of corn, Belfalfa. A lot of that. But being an independent businessman, how much is dependent on this? And I don't think that getting at what we're wanting to do, that this is the right way to do it. That's why, you know, seconded the motion to put it on the floor. We've heard a lot of debate about Bill Gates. Very visionary, and a couple of those letters that have came to us over the last few days, last two weeks. Then again, there was another, there's a couple of other ones that said, he doesn't even live here, so we shouldn't even listen to him. So I'm slightly confused about what to believe and what even is in that op-ed that Bill Gates gave. But in my mind, it's more of where we have as a county than my friend across the row said about uploading and downloading. And how much of this is that download? Is it in our interest in our use of taxpayers' dollars, property taxpayers' dollars, to get the best out of this for us to be doing it? I was thinking last night, what's the next thing? Canada hasn't won a World Series in 30 some odd years. Could we put, putting Gray County taxpayers' money into winning a World Series for us? Kind of a bad example. But the thought is, it's over where we should be. I think we've got to get back to doing what we do right and do good and do well. And then we can make an We can make an impact. On climate change. And I'm a great supporter of that because I think I'm the only person here that drove an EV here today. I'm committed to the climate change. But I'm committed to Gray County doing what Gray County should be doing. Not just what we're mandated, but what we should be doing. And this, in my mind, is probably something that, yes. Could be left to Gray Agro Services to deliver. But is it Gray County responsibility to be funding it? And I think we've stepped way out of our bounds on that. Is that five? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments? Councillor Dubrin and then councillor Boddy.
Thank you. And through you, while I I absolutely agree that we need to look at every. Opportunity to reduce our budget and to look for ways, what's necessary and what's not necessary, but. I'm I'm reminded that agriculture is one of our primary employers and contributors to the GDP. And that Gray County, I hear this at AMO all the time, is a model to be followed. And people look to our agricultural community and the advancements that they are making. By doing these small things, small actions can can create tremendous results. And so while I'm I'm supportive of looking at all opportunities to reduce our budget. I am supportive of having it as a line, as long as we don't lose sight of it. To councillor Pringle's comment is maybe we needs to be tweaked. Maybe we need to scale it back a bit. Maybe there's a different vetting opportunity. But that comes from staff advising us on the benefits, pros, the cons. And so I'm I'm looking forward to our deliberations on the budget and I. I support the Budget and Finance Committee's. Approach and their work in providing us suggestions and recommendations. But at the the bottom line is 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 what is good? And what do we need? What do we need to do now? What do we need to do in the future? I'm I'm on the fence. About the experimental acres or to the level in which we contribute it, contribute to it. But I don't want to lose sight of it because I think it's done some remarkable work and some great initiatives have come out of that that other agricultural. Farms can then model.
Thank you. Councillor Boddy.
Thank you, Warden. I wonder if somebody can ask, answer this question. The opposition to this seems to be all around climate change, but as I'm looking at the Gray Agricultural Services, specifically twenty twenty five experimental acres projects, I'm not seeing the climate change. Factor in there. Remedial mulch for fruit trees. Forage trials for strip grazing, pasteurized poultry for soil fertility. Overseeding turnip to extend fall grazing, late summer seeding of hay, creation of apple guilds. Good projects, I get from councillor McQueen that these are agricultural. I'm I'm missing the connection with climate change on those. That's that's. I don't understand how they tie in. To the climate change discussion. It it seems like we're talking about two different things altogether. Thanks.
Mary Lou, do you have a response to that or just? Randy will have a go at it. Randy, please.
Thank you for that. And and if I might turn to Nile or Linda to to help with this as well. I think in terms of the projects that we've 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 seen in terms of some of that seed funding being provided to to various projects. It's it's around the whole opportunities to adapt to some of our our weather, our changing climate. And and opportunities to look for how how we might be able to. Use technologies or use different different approaches to be able to adapt. So it's 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 may, and some of that may be also to. In terms of just. Further sustainable farming practices and experimenting with some of those those pieces. So. So I'd say it's it's definitely in line with what the overall kind of climate change umbrella, when you look at it from both a mitigation. And an adaptation perspective, the the projects are definitely in alignment with some of the actions that are identified in going green and gray with respects. With respect to the agricultural aspects.
And I guess if I might, if you indulge the chair for a minute, I might tell you a little story. It's some of you, some of you might have heard me say this before, but Gray County and Bruce, to an extent as well. Still maintains a lot of the legacy infrastructure on our farms. We still have basically a hundred acre lots. They're split up into ten, twenty five, thirty acre pieces, but it's all essentially there. It's been there for a lot of years. People are moving into our area and buying up a hundred acre parcels that have no background in agriculture. Essentially, they don't know what they don't know. There are some of us, myself included, councillor Eccles, McQueen, there may be others that have farmed all our lives. We'd never consider doing any of the things that have been in experimental acres because. Just, I I just wouldn't because I probably don't know if it would work and I just wouldn't. It's not what I do. But there are people that are willing to go out on a limb and try stuff because they don't know what they don't know. And if some of that experimental stuff works. Then maybe the rest of us take a second look at it and say, well, maybe that would work on my farm. So there, it's it's not so much about going green, although there's an element of that in it. It's about what's, what will help sustain agriculture in Gray County specifically, if not the rest of the province. So. Uh, just a little bit of a. I don't know if that's a story or not, but anyway, I'll I'll stop there. Anybody else have any other thoughts? If not, I'll call the vote. An affirmative vote would retain it out of the budget. A no vote would put it back into the draft budget. Okay, all the. All those in favor? Remove it. Go ahead. What's your point of order?
Just if you could please explain that further because the motion is an approval of the committee minute. The minute recommendation. So a yay should be approving the minutes forthcoming from committee.
Correct. Sorry, maybe I stated it reverse. I apologize. So an affirmative vote. Would sustain the recommendation from the committee and no vote would overturn that recommendation. Okay, we all understand that. Now that the chair's got it through his tech skull, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion fails. Okay, now, thank you, Mary Lou. Now on to number four, the staff repair report on the implications of removing the going green and gray initiative for the consideration of the twenty twenty seven budget. Councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, deputy Warren. I do want to move an amendment to this one. I understand the. The premise of trying to get. My red lights on. I understand the premise of trying to get more information from staff, and I think. The way we were direction to staff and the way we were. The the motion influences the data that we receive back from staff. And so in this situation, I think. The motion's words wouldn't actually get the right data back to this body to make an informed decision. You are preempting the decision and you're giving direction to staff to bring a specific set of data. So I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to remove the words implications of removing the going green and gray initiative for the consideration of. The budget and insert. Bring back a report on an updated review of the targets established in going green and gray for the presented, to be presented prior to the budget. And the difference here is. What we need to do is have an actual discussion on the merits, the successes, the challenges of going green and gray. Where do we need to pivot and put energy into? Where do we need to put it and pivot and maybe invest more funds into it? Rather than asking staff for the report that says. We're pulling out regardless of what the data says. And there is a difference in terms of what that report will bring back. And so that's why I moved that amendment.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for that? Councillor Dubrin will second that motion. On the amendment, is there any discussion? Councillor Eccles.
I'm not clear on what that was. There was, what is, when we get it up on the screen?
Can everyone see that on their screen? Okay, councillor Eccles, you're good with that? Or are you under? Yes, if the amendment succeeds, then we will we will also put up the the amended motion. But for now, it's the amendment that's on the screen. Councillor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, deputy Warren. Just for more clarity for my friends across the aisle. The premise here is we need, we need to receive a report on how going green and gray is working. It was established in twenty twenty two. My understanding from discussions with staff is that there is already an intent from staff to bring back a review of this program. As we should with all big policy and big programming that the county puts on. The difference here is what we're asking staff to bring back. The motion that came out of the Budget and Finance Committee. Gives direction from to staff to bring back a report on removing us from going gray, green and gray. Without actually asking, is it being successful? Are we seeing benefits? Is the investment coming in with to fruition? Is there a certain aspects of growing green in the grid that maybe aren't working, but certain other ones are, and we should pivot our investment into those areas? The motion coming out of the Budget and Finance Committee is strictly remove it from the twenty twenty seven budget. And to me, that is not getting the information this county actually needs. So my motion is to change that direction and have staff bring back a clear direction and a clear report on the fulsome. Going green and gray so that council then can make an informed decision on whether or not there's merits of changing the amount of investment we're making into this action.
Councillor Greg.
I will oppose the changing of the wording. The the actual wording implications is appropriate because. Right now we have two positions which are grant funded. We are undertaking, and this is part of the conversation that we had at budget meeting. It initially was just to reflect the two thousand twenty six budget and through discussion, we realized the conversation is so broad. There's, it's multifaceted that we've got national grant funding programs that we're leveraging for EV charging stations. We've got partners that we've been working with and establishment of building standards. So we have some of these positions that right now are rate funded, not levy funded. They have a fixed funding date at this time. So I think for that reason, an updated review of the targets. Is not sufficient when you're actually wanting to reflect the intent of the the report coming forward. It's not automatically to remove it from the two thousand twenty seven budget. It's a report back to council on the implications. And one of those implications, and it's not a target. One of the implications could be we've lost that revenue, that grant funding stream. So the implication now is it's going to fall onto the levy because someone's going to pay for it. And as a council now, you're having a whole different discussion. About the report than you're going to have when you're just having an updated review of the targets because an updated review of the targets. That's almost a subjective, warm and cozy feeling about, you know, do we like how much we've done? Could we do more? Yes. Is that good enough? Probably, maybe not. We don't know. But implications reflects better and there is nothing that beholds. The council to the removal or the continuation of it in the budget for two thousand twenty seven at that point. You know, I could move for a budget that we buy cameras and put them over the highways so we have real time camera. For people, for the public to go on and look at our roads in, you know. You, as councillors, you can move anything. But. A review of the targets does, isn't as fulsome as the initial intent of that reporting back should be.
Councillor Dubrin. Please.
Thank you. And through you to the to the question and to the original recommendation. The way it is worded implies that. The Budget and Finance Committee is recommending we exit green and gray. I listened to the meeting. And the wording is to bring back. A report that specifically addresses the implications of exiting, going green and gray. It does not necessarily. Include a progress report on the successes of going green and gray. And my understanding was that staff always intended to councillor Nielsen's point earlier. That staff would be bringing a progress report on going green and gray. It's a policy set by this body. And. That progress report would allow us to have the information to determine whether or not we proceed. Whether or not we stay with the status quo, or maybe we scale it back. But to bring a report that only provides the implications of exiting going green and gray doesn't give us a full picture or all of the information. So I understand the motion that councillor Nielsen is putting forward is to review the targets established, but I don't think it goes far enough even then. I I. I'm not, I'm not sure that I have a question or an amendment at this time. I just think that that. Allowing the progress report to proceed as it was originally intended. So that we have the information and at that point in time, we can decide whether or not this is a program that we want to continue. I guess my, actually, I do have a question through you, deputy Warden. Does the Budget and Finance Committee, in its terms of reference, allow for them to? Or is it within their purview to make recommendations to exit a policy? That was set by this, by this body, regardless of whether it's a financial. The financial piece, the budget piece.
I guess I would say as chair of that particular committee, lucky me. I would say that the the committee has not actually put forward the motion to exit the program. The motion, as councillor Greg rightly pointed out, the motion that was supported was to. Request a report on the implications of leaving the program. And in that respect, I think the committee is within their purview, although I'll I'll defer to the clerk or the CEO on that particular matter.
Thank you, Tara, and and through you, deputy Warden. So just looking at the terms of reference, just outline the scope of responsibility for the Budget and Finance Committee. Shall include providing input in the creation of the county's first multi-year operating budget. That was, of course, in context of last year, reviewing the draft operating capital budget documents prior to preparation of the budget package for council. Reviewing operating capital budget reports on a quarterly basis. Recommending the annual schedule for capital and operating budget preparation and presentation for council approval. Reviewing financial and fiscal policies, practices and procedures as required. Review reports with significant financial focus such as development charges, revenue, development charges, background study, investment revenue, reserve fund studies. And review the strategic asset management plan and policies and make recommendations to council. So that's the list of the scope of responsibility with respect to the Budget and Finance Committee. It's part of the terms of reference.
So I would suggest that, yes, they're within their purview to put forward the motion that is on the floor. Or the original motion. Councillor Dubrin.
So I suppose that my my. So I suppose that my, my question is more to, is this original motion tainting the report to only include the implications of exiting growing, going green and gray as opposed to a progress report on the benefits, the progress to date, and recommendations at that point in time of whether or not to continue with our trajectory or scale back or remove. My concern is that this is too limiting a focus for staff in that the, this body will not get a fulsome picture of going green and gray and its progress.
I guess in response, I would say that budget ultimately is always a decision of council. And the Budget and Committee, or Budget and Finance Committee is simply an advisory committee to make recommendations, and that's what they've done. Okay, uh, Counselor Mackey is next, and then I have Counselor McQueen and then Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Yeah, I'm, I'm torn on the, on the wording too, because it, there is the implication of actually removing a cost benefit analysis on any program that we have, I think is important. I'm not sure right now what benefits we are getting. I know what the costs are. I know there's an affordability crisis out there. We're all dealing with our lower tier budgets and we're putting off work because we can't afford to do it. So roads aren't getting done because we gotta keep a tax rate with, you know, below a certain percent because people can't afford a huge one. We know we're at six point nine percent right now. And Budget and Finance was tasked was looking at ways to reduce that. Um, I pay a lot of income tax to the government. I pay a lot to the Ontario government, all who have climate change initiatives. Property taxes continue to go up. You know, probably at a rate higher than any of us would like. And I hear from a number of seniors, and not, not just seniors, but people in general that can't afford these significant tax increases. So it's difficult to try and reduce any program because there's merits to all the programs that we have throughout the county. But as Counselor Eccles said, there is our lane to stay within, and you know, what are we supposed to be doing? We have social services, we have ambulance. We have bridges, we have roads, we have lots of mandatory long-term care. We have lots of mandatory services that continue to require more and more funds. We hear about the downloading from the province. Yes, that's happening all the time. We can't control that. Going green and gray is one thing that we have some control over. So knowing if that program is working when we are spending a lot of money. And I do know that we will be spending more and more as we get deeper into that program. So that's why I think a thorough review of going green and gray is necessary. You know, to look after the best interests of our tax code. There's one person paying the tab, and someone can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Counselor McQueen is next.
I don't disagree with the Counselor Mackey, in the sense of taxes and keeping them down and I, I just wonder, this is a question to the amended motion, that should it say also the targets establishing growing, uh, going green and gray and also a financial model presented? Or the financial, the financials of it, or, or the, or the, um, funding, however, is going to my colleague Counselor Greg, and he mentioned about the funding and some of that. I think it would be good for us to have that information in that report, or maybe it's, maybe it would come back in that report. It doesn't need to be in the motion. I'm, I'm asking for clarity on that part.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Warden, uh, with respect to, uh, and so since, since obviously Budget and Finance Committee staff have had a chance to uh, take a look at, uh, some of the previous motions passed by council with respect to um, when the first, uh, going green and gray, um, plan was, was first established. Um, and I'll just read the one motion that, that was passed in two thousand twenty-two, that the climate change action plan and a net zero greenhouse gas emissions target by two thousand fifty be endorsed to help guide corporate strategic plans and priorities, and that staff also be directed to explore more aggressive corporate target dates and bring updated target reviews each term of council. So in order to inform each term of council, uh, as part of, uh, some of the work plan considerations for two thousand twenty-six based on, um, based on staff discussions, uh, we would be bringing forward, uh, a review of, of the, of the overall program. Uh, as part of that overall program, we'd be looking at the financial aspects, uh, with respect to the overall program. Um, where there's, there's, um, where we've seen some, um, some great success, where there's opportunity to maybe tweak some, some, some items, where there's maybe some further emphasis that should be provided in certain areas. Uh, based on where we have seen some more success than maybe other areas. Um, so that would be part of that work plan anyways, as part of the progress report, based on that previous motion. Um, and so, so with that, I think, uh, in terms of the reviewing the overall target reviews is looking at the overall progress of, of that prior to the next term of council. In order to do that, the work has to be done in two thousand twenty-six in order to inform what that may look like from a financial perspective and what's included as part of the work plans going forward in two thousand twenty-seven and two thousand twenty-eight to help inform those proposed budgets. So, so that's where, um, again, upon further reflection, staff looked at some of those pieces. We've looked at, then this is something that we would already have to do as part of the work plan. It's part of the previous direction from council. Um, and, and so that's something that I think would be part of that review. Uh, it, coming forward unless, again, otherwise as further directed by County Council.
You missed, or Deputy Warden, thank you for that clarity, because then we don't have to add more words. Just need that clear. Just one other comment I do want to make was, when I became Warden in December of two thousand nineteen, one of the first things I brought forward was the suggestion of creating a climate change committee in this body, and it was, it was endorsed. And we started, that's where we sort of started. I don't know if those that were maybe back that time, and that was sort of the start of us looking at climate change as a, as a county council and, and all that stuff and record, and sort of transferred to where maybe where you're talking about, um, Mr. CEO and that sort of thing. But I mean, this body has sort of, it has, has endorsed the, the concept of looking at it right back to that days of, of those committees, and that committee went through two thousand twenty. And you know what happened in two thousand twenty, but it still stayed the course. I mean, COVID hit and you had to bear off and stuff like that, but we certainly started. That's where it started with the committee and recommendations that came forward. So thank you, Mr. Deputy Ward.
Counselor Carlton.
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and I think, um, our CEO answered part of my concern is that we're putting a motion on the floor that was already dealt with through the original plan to do those progress updates as we went forward. And I think we're circumventing that report and trying to focus it in a direction maybe it wasn't intended to go. My second comment would relate to comments about what our role is here at the county. And I think it's a two-part. We have a role to manage things for the better of our residents now with what's needed now, but we also have a role to play in planning for their future and ensuring that the future is going to be one that's affordable. And I think being aware of climate change and what needs to happen there is important. I'll end with that.
Thank you, Counselor Carlton. Any other discussion? Counselor Eccles and then Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, today. I guess I'm reading this a lot different. The implications of removing and getting, dealing just with the amendment. The implications of removing. When I voted for this and whatnot, was pretty much what Randy had said there a few minutes ago, Mr. CEO. It's not about, yes, what implications or what's going to happen if this was removed out. I could go with, fine, let's change the word and say the implications of maintaining the going in green. It's one or the other. You're gonna have to, I would expect, and I had expected staff to do the implications of removing. We're gonna lose, you know, some of the targets. Whatever the target was, if we remove it, we may not, you know, we don't gonna have it. And to get to that point. I think we got it's the understanding and my understanding of, it was to give us a report if we remove it. Yeah, this is gonna happen. It's gonna have this implication on the budget. It's gonna have implications of where we've, you know, got to going green and gray. But it's not about just, the report would be very limited if it was just about the financial or the impact of remove. It's gotta be what we would lose as well. So the idea of this amendment, the amendments, I think, changing it altogether. It's just focusing in on review of the targets. I want a full review, a full of what this means with this program. If we remove it, yeah, we're gonna gain this, this and this. Possibly. Financially, whatever. But if we remove it, we're gonna lose this, this and this would be in the report. So the thought that this motion is saying, oh, we're only gonna find out what, you know, the bad part? No. The report, I would hope that staff will bring it to us with all of the data. If it makes you feel better, I'm not gonna vote for the amendment. I'm gonna oppose it. Because I think it changes, it's not an amendment. It just changes the whole motion. I would put forward a amendment if whatever happens with this one. I would put forward, fine, the implications of maintaining. Because it may come out that maintaining going in green is gonna do us wonderful things. And projected that will be saving the county millions of dollars. But it, one way or the other, it's just a word. That the report should be wholesome, full. And be going on both sides. And to what Randy had said, and that was said in the committee, that yes, there would be a report. I think this is just making sure that that doesn't get lost.
Counselor DeBreen.
Point of order is that the member has, uh, already spoken to the amended motion on the floor once as per our procedural bylaw, unless there's indulgence, the council speak more so.
Okay, I'll, uh, hold off on Counselor DeBreen until anyone else, else that hasn't spoken wishes due to the amendment. Counselor Nielsen, I can't remember. Have you spoken to the amendment other than making the motion? I know you made the motion, so I'll, I'll go past him as well. Counselor Boardon, y'all, please.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Warden, through you. Uh, I, I think, um, to count the Counselor Eccles, um, comments. It, it is a matter of wording. Um, the amendment to me does not go far enough because the review of targets, is it gonna be targets established and goals met? So we, if we're looking for a fulsome report, I think the initial motion, uh, we wouldn't have had this conversation, we said the implications removing or maintaining. The going, it's, it's, it's a simple, it's a simple word process. That I think everybody wants a fulsome report. It's just a matter of, I can't support the amendment only because it just says a review of targets. That does nothing to, to dictate a fulsome report. So um, I think it's just a matter of if it was removing or, or maintaining, then we get a full report. What are our targets? What have we met? How this will affect us as we go forward? That, that's the kind of report I, I'd like to see. The, the, the amendment to it, to me, does not go far enough in to the original, um, recommendation of the, of the, of the group. And just as a last point is, I, I'm happy that the group meets and, and the committee and makes recommendations, because there's still eighteen people to make the decision on that. It's just a, at, at a local level, when you have a committee of council, they bring it to all of council, which we're doing today. So I have no problem with, uh, any committee making recommendations to this council. That's just my comments, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Counselor Deckard, please.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Uh, as I reflect back on, on that meeting, uh, you know, the discussion that we had varied from just saying, no, we wanted, our proposal would be to cut it, to actually coming back to, uh, to staff and saying we need to know the implications of cutting it. And I think that's really what our desire was here. Um, it is so we're making an educated decision down the road and, and therefore, you know, the, the motion as it was presented in from the meeting minutes, I think is, is really gets us to where we want it to be. It, uh, we all recognized around that table, we need to know more about what this action would do. So I, I can't support the amendment. I would support the original motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor Hutchison.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Warden. This time I'd like to call the vote, please.
Is there, is there anyone else that has not spoken to the motion yet? The amendment. I'm gonna go back to Counselor DeBreen if no one else. Counselor DeBreen.
My question through you, Deputy Warden, was more of on procedure. I am uncom, I'm not totally sold on the amendment, and I wanted to understand from the clerk. Procedure of an amendment. But I will just allow the, the question to be called, and I can propose an amendment. Follow it.
Okay, Counselor Nielsen, I'll give you the last word. You were the motion, uh, you made the motion for the amendment.
I, I actually really appreciate that, Chair. Um, the wording of the motion, I understand and respect the conversation we're having, which is exact, which is fantastic, actually. The motion was working with staff to try to find a motion that would, amendment that would work to get to the place where we were before this motion, the motion from the Budget and Finance Committee came. That staff have already have the direction to bring forward a report. That's the goal of the motion. That was the goal. The wording was working with staff to bring that forward. So if, if council's position is they want to move a motion to have implications of one or the other, or if the council wants to have the report that staff are already working on, is kind of where we're standing here. My motion is trying to direct staff to keep carrying, carrying on with the direction they've already received rather than having a different report come forward that has different implications.
Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion fails. So now we're back to the amended, or back to the original motion as unamended. Counselor DeBreen, please.
I'd like to propose an amendment. That just disappeared, sorry. That does, that in keeping with the goal is that staff bring a progress report and the targets established and the cost analysis of going green and gray to be presented prior to or in consideration of the two thousand twenty-seven budget.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second for that motion? Counselor Ma, okay? Close. It's close. Now we're getting on here. I need, I need lunch. Anyway, uh, okay, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, discussion on the amendment. We'll wait until, can we get it up on the screen? Maybe restate your, your amendment, please, Counselor DeBreen.
Let staff prepare a report on the targets, so remove the implications of removing and replace it with the targets and cost analysis.
So, uh, in consultation with the clerk, uh, she is suggesting that we have already voted down the notion of a report on the targets, but if you would revise your motion or your amendment to just include the financial implications, then that would be sufficient.
That was my goal. Thank you.
All right. We'll get this onto the screen here. Uh, yeah, no kidding. No kidding. I'm gonna be talking to the warden after this, I can tell you that. Her, her timing is. I'm having fun. I don't know about the rest of you. We'll get there, we'll get there. Good discussion. I haven't got any other stories right now. Okay, I'll read the motion back. It's, I believe it's on the screen, yes it is. That the motion be amended to insert a clause requesting staff to bring forward a report on the financials of going green and gray prior to the consideration of the 2027 budget. Does that meet your description? Go ahead.
Point of clarification then, um, where is that being inserted? Because it's important to understand that it's a progress report on the targets as well. So.
Well, as it it's not, the, the, the piece about the targets is not being inserted because that was not part of the original motion. And the piece about the targets was already voted on and lost, so we can't include that. And it's covered in the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two motion, the direction that was already given. So that is kind of taken care of, so to speak.
So where are we inserting this clause? And what are we removing?
It's being suggested that we break for lunch. But it, it kind of defeats the, the notion that we have as you, you know, we have people interested in the gallery, I was hoping that we could deal with this report prior to lunch so that folks wouldn't have to come back. Just before I go to you, Counsel Nielsen, uh, the clerk is still trying to, I wanna get this motion on the floor for, or on the screen first before we go any further. Yep.
Thank you for your indulgence on that. Well, we suggested a spot to insert that amendment. So where you read the motion be amended to insert the clause directing staff to bring forward a report on the financials of going green and gray, that's the proposed amendment. And the highlighted section underneath is what that would look like if it went through. So that's staff repair report on the implications of moving going green and gray and bring forward a report on the financials for consideration prior to the 2027 budget is what staff have, um, suggested. But, uh, looking for further input if, if.
It's not exactly what I intended. Um, we're kind of repeating what we're saying, we're asking for a report on the implications of removing going green and gray. My intent was to, can the staff to bring the report they intended to bring in the first place that included the financial implications of that plan. But um, I, we're.
Okay, I'm gonna suggest we're gonna break for lunch so that we can get this sorted out. This is why it's appreciated if you want amendments or otherwise, bring them to the clerk prior to the meeting so that we're not trying to do this on the fly. I can appreciate how the discussion has unfolded, but let's break for lunch and we'll come back with the amended motion. Let's try to be back by, say, one forty. And I apologize to the gallery. Okay, thank you Rob. We'll bring the meeting back to order. I trust everybody got a few bites at least. Uh, so we're back to the, uh, proposed amendment to the main motion, the ma, the amendment is. Okay, so the motion has not been actually made yet. So Counsel DeBreen, are you prepared to move the motion to amend?
Thank you through you. If I could see what we finally landed on, I think I would like to move the motion.
Okay, so the amendment is proposed to be to insert in the main motion uh, modifying or maintaining the actions within. So the, the, the amended motion would read that staff prepare a report on the implications of removing. And then the amendment starts modifying or maintaining the actions. Uh, that's the end of the, or within, that's the end of the amendment. And then the grow, going green and gray initiative for the consideration of the 2027 budget.
I shall move.
Is there a seconder? Counsel Carlton will second that. Thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Now we're back to the motion, the original motion as amended. Do I need to read it again? Okay, any discussion on the mesh, motion as amended? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Whoa. Go ahead, Counsel Nielsen.
I pulled, I pulled the Counselor Eccles. Um, last, last minute, last minute comment. Just for clarity, for myself, from staff. Passing this motion changes direction to staff that was previously given back in 2022 when we created great, green and gray. And the motion to bring forward a, a review of the going green and gray plan in 2026. This motion will cha- will supersede that motion and give direction that this is what we're looking for this time. And if we vote against this motion, we still get that report. And if we vote in favor, this one supersedes that one. That's all I'm just wanting clarity for everybody around the horseshoe, as unclear as that was. I'm looking for clarity.
That, Randy, you wanna speak to that, please?
So, uh, the 2022 motion indicates that, uh, staff would bring forward, uh, a, a report regarding the targets um, with respect to going green and gray. So that could be, uh, you know, similar to what's identified as part of this motion. Uh, but this helps clarify, I think, in terms of what information will be brought back by staff as part of that comprehensive report. Uh, to give the information that this council needs in order to determine what's, what's, what's kept, what's changed, what's potentially removed or shifted. Um, I think this motion would give that further clarification.
Thank you Randy. Last call for questions. Counsel Carlton.
Maybe this doesn't mean anything, but who is the report coming back to? Budget and Finance or County Council?
I think at this stage, staff would recommend that this report come back to council. So it can be to the whole initially, but then the council.
Yeah, may as well. Okay, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? Opposed if any? That carries. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Now we'll move on to the fifth recommendation from the Budget and Audit Committee, or Budget and Finance, rather. You're jumping ahead, you were hoping, you were hopeful, you were hopeful. I need a mover for that recommendation there. Counsel Nielsen seconded by Counsel Boddy. Counsel Nielsen, you have a question?
Thank you very much, uh, Deputy Warden. Just commenting number five, that says the report regarding the tenure capital forecast come forward, but it does say removing the experimental acres, which was a lost, so I guess that will automatically change and update, just for clarity.
I heard disregard, so I'm gonna do that. No, sorry, I, I didn't understand your, go ahead, try it again.
My apologies Deputy Warden, I was talking a little fast. Just, I'm making sure I'm on the same page with the clerk, was that their one, uh, section of, uh, item number five says removing funding for the experimental acres project. That motion lost earlier. I was just more commenting that this will automatically up, be updated through the clerk's, it's, so it's moving it here does not reestablish that idea.
I'm gonna say correct. All those in favor? That carries. Number six, the final one, the report regarding the capital project status update report as of thirty-one of August of this year be received for information. Someone care to move that, please? Counsel Carlton, Counsel Pringle, questions? All those in favor? That is carried. Apparently it's been brought to my attention that we have not actually received the minutes yet. And here I thought we'd spent the last, I don't know, two days debating the minutes, but apparently we have not done that yet. So I needed someone to move that, please. Counsel Decker and Counsel Nielsen. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is carried. Perfect. Okay, Randy, you're up. We're gonna talk about now Roma delegations. So Randy, the floor is yours, sir. Oh. Oh, no, no, we're doing the, uh, yeah, we have the two, uh, yep, yep, no. We have six A and six B, I think, are, am I wrong? Oh, okay. Oh, man. I was really hoping to move this along. Try again. Okay, seven B is the item that we're going to entertain now on the budget and it is regarding easement and memorandum of understanding. So Randy, the floor is yours, sir.
I don't know if we need a mover and second for at least the first recommendation.
Yes, we do. We need a mover and second. Counsel Hutchison and DeBreen, thank you very much.
Thank you Deputy Warden. Uh, good afternoon, everybody. Uh, so I'll be as quick as I can with respect to this matter. Uh, the report I'm presenting today deals with two matters. First matter is updating council on optioning back the lands adjacent to Gray Gables from Bright Shores as directed by council. And to recommend easements for Bright Shores as part of that land transfer process. The second matter is to present a proposed MOU as per the previous direction room council that outlines the terms of the potential sale of the portion of these lands to Gray Highlands to support the future development of an OPP station in Markdale. So just to give some further background, in July twenty twenty, Gray County transferred lands to Bright Shores as part of Gray County's contribution for the Markdale Hospital project. During that, the planning for that hospital project, it was determined that stormwater upgrades required on the approximate four acre parcel adjacent to the south driveway entrance to the Gray Gables and hospital properties. In order for the stormwater works to be eligible for provincial funding at that time, Bright Shores required to own the lands. The agreement allowed the county to repurchase the lands once the stormwater works were completed. And those stormwater upgrades are now finished. On May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, committee the whole passed a motion directing staff to option those, those lands back from Bright Shores and to negotiate an agreement with Gray Highlands to sell a portion of these lands for a proposed OPP station. As part of the terms of optioning back the lands from Bright Shores, the county agreed to, uh, provide Bright Shores with an easement permitting access to the lands where the south driveway hospital sign was to be installed. The actual location of that sign, uh, moves slightly from its intended location. And as such, Bright Shores has requested that the easement be amended to line with its present location. And that's shown in figure one, uh, outlined in blue. Uh, this easement will allow Bright Shores to access the lands to erect, repair, maintain, change, or remove that's, that hospital sign, uh, should they need to do so. Bright Shores has also requested an additional easement to access and maintain the light poles that were installed as part of the Markdale Hospital project. And these were installed along the shared entrance, and that's outlined in red on figure one. Staff have no concerns with these requests, provided that they do not interfere with the future use of the lands by either the county or Gray Highlands. So it's recommended that easements be prepared for council's consideration subject to further consultation with Bright Shores and Gray Highlands on the specific provisions of the easement. So that's dealing with recommendation number one. I don't know if we wanna just deal with that, and then I can go into the report on recommendation number two.
Let's do motion one first. Are there any questions on the easement, uh, recommendation? Not seeing any? All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, Randy?
Thank you Deputy Warden. So as noted earlier, part of the motion that was passed by County Committee of the Whole on May twenty-second also directed staff to negotiate an agreement with Gray Highlands that would commit to selling a portion of the subject lands. This motion was based on a request received earlier this year from Gray Highlands requesting that the county consider transferring a part of the subject lands to the municipality. Gray Highlands is planning to construct a new police station in Markdale for the OPP as the current Markdale location is slated for future residential development. Uh, Gray Highlands Council also recently directed Gray Highlands staff to begin negotiations for the development of a new OPP regional facility in Markdale. Uh, a media release from Gray Highlands issued, uh, last month notes that the new facility is proposed to serve uh, as a reporting center for policing services across Graham Bruce County, supporting multiple municipalities and potentially extending, expanding service in the area. A draft MOU has been prepared outlining the key terms as directed by council, including that the county commits to selling only the land required to support the build. The bill be designed as compact as possible, utilizing the least amount of land as possible. That Gray Highlands covers all the costs with respect to the bill, design, stormwater relocation, legal survey. Uh, that the existing stormwater and drainage works for, uh, Gray Gable site and shared entrances must be addressed in the design. If the OPP station does not proceed, the commitment is withdrawn. The sale price will be based on an appraisal and that future agreement of purchase and sale will come back to council for approval. Staff have worked with Bright Shores and Gray Highlands staff in preparing the draft MOU. And it's recommended that a bylaw be brought forward for council's consideration to authorize the warden clerk to execute the MOU subject to any further minor revisions recommended by the parties. Uh, at this stage, there's no direct financial impacts to the county. Gray Highlands will cover, like said, all the costs related to the transfer. Uh, the county has engaged an appraiser to determine the land value of the eventual sale. And the results of that appraisal will inform the agreement of purchase and sale, which would again come back to council at a future date. So that's dealing with the second recommendation in the, in the report.
Thank you Randy, and I neglected to get a mover and second for that. Counsel Patterson and Counsel Hutchison. Any discussion or questions on that report? Not seeing any, I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you Randy. Now we have a report seven C from the clerk's office, it is regarding delegation duties by law and policy update. Is there a mover and second? Counsel Mackey and Counsel Pringle. Madam Clerk, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Warden. This report is before each day as a, an update to the delegation and duties by law. It is a policy that's required by the municipal act. As a municipality, Gray County exercises its decision-making abilities through council. Um, and a delegation of duties by law allows for certain authorities to be delegated to staff or other bodies to approve on its behalf. It does help with streamlining and efficiency of municipal operations. It is a very important bylaw in that regard. And, um, staff are able to approve administrative and operational items, um, on council's behalf and carry out their, their work. And the current bylaw as written was updated in twenty twenty. It currently offers little flexibility for staff, uh, when they're, um, carrying out operational matters. Both for the staff that are doing the work and then the agreement staff in the clerk's department who are supporting them. The bylaw also doesn't delegate signatories out past the warden and clerk for many of the items. Um, so it, it does often rest with the warden and clerk to sign as the signing officer of the organization. And this new bylaw does propose to shift that signatory to the staff who are actually approving the documentation. It will also allow staff to approve and sign documents that are non-financial or procured in accordance with the. or procured in accordance with the purchasing policy, where the subject matter is administrative and operational nature and relate to the management of Gray County. It will also allow staff to sign amendments and terminations where, that follow an agreement that has been signed and other ancillary docs if there are no financial changes or implications to Gray County. There are a number of other delegations and changes listed in the report, but there are some that are worth just specifying during the presentation here. So there is a new section that includes special circumstances or emergencies when it's necessary to act within the normal mandate of a department and giving the department the ability to act where needed. There's a reporting requirement that comes along with that. There's a delegation to the treasurer and clerk to appoint deputy treasurers and deputy clerks as needed. And it specifies a section where certain staff are able to bring certain types of bylaw forward without a prior report to convene the whole. These reports include traffic matters, minor in nature, heritage tax rebates, the teague matters, tax increment, grants, thank you, and staff appointments as well. There is a delegation of authority to the CAO to act during the restricted acts slash lame duck periods in the year of a municipal election. There is a portion that exists in the current bylaw already, but this proposal would ship the rest of the eligible duties to the CAO to allow the CAO to act during restricted acts and lame duck. Historically, we've always brought a standalone bylaw forward which delegates those duties during an election year, but having it incorporate into this bylaw would negate the need to do that. But it would just have note to council if there were staffing changes in the future and our CAO was absent for a portion of that time, we would have to go back and, and change that bylaw if, if council wished us to do so. There is a delegation of authority to the museum manager or the director of economic development, tourism and culture to approve or deny the accessions at the museum. Director, sorry, delegation of authority to the director of long-term care to approve and sign temporary bed licenses, signing waivers, for all department heads, agreements with federal and provincial governments, agencies, institutions, and community partners for county undertakings, program delivery, and administration. And that's a summary of the changes in the report. What the bylaw doesn't do is allow staff to approve or sign documentation that for things that haven't been approved by council. So those, those will still have to go through the budget process and be approved by county council. Or if they're considered administrative and operational, that would shift to staff approving and signing. It also doesn't remove any decision-making from council. That is retained by virtue of being council. It can be revoked at any time, with the exception of one item, which is the head for the purposes on, on DEPA, that was actually previously delegated many years ago, but it's incorporated into this bylaw as well for clarity. That's kind of the summary of the report, and happy to take any questions with that, or any?
Thank you, Tara. Are there any questions? Counselor Bourne, you're up.
Thank you Deputy Warden through you. Thanks Tara. Just on page three, the top page three, agreements with federal, provincial governments, agencies, institutions. Can you just extrapolate that further? That's, is that just the execution of them? Because those, some of those agreements should come to this council. I'm just, just for clarification.
So the way it's proposed in the bylaw is it would be the blanket agreements with federal and provincial governments. There's no threshold in there, but as long as the program or activity has been approved by council. If it hasn't been approved by council, then those agreements would still have to come back for actual endorsement.
Okay, any further questions? Call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Tara. Now we're moving on to seven E, as we've already dealt with D. This is a report from Stephanie Stewart regarding continuation of the GTR and the Ghost Transit Systems in twenty twenty-six. Stephanie, welcome. Floor is yours. Wait, I need a mover and second, sorry. Counselor Kivini and Counselor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good afternoon, County Council. So my report this afternoon is just to seek your approval to extend operations of the GTR and to participate in the Ghost transit service until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, ensuring continued transit access during the transition to a potential new regional system. The province has approved OTIF funding to support both these services, and staff had confirmed from contributing partners that they will also support this idea. There are no further financial requests outside of this previously, sorry, outside the previously approved three-county levy of one hundred and forty-five thousand for twenty twenty-six budget considerations, as per my last report. At this time, I'd like to take any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Any questions? Counselor Greg, please.
Thank you, and just a couple of questions, just to confirm some of the numbers in the charts on page five. The Ghost has been a great service benefiting people up and down Highway Six. I wrote it many times and good to see the revenues shown on, on the chart as well, but the connectivity's been terrific and valued in the community for sure. One question, Stephanie, the chart shows fair revenue for the GTR, January to March of eighty-seven hundred dollars. It also showed really positive increasing ridership numbers above that. It just had me thinking, that eighty-seven hundred strikes me as not maybe being correct. Is that, is that the actual fair revenue that is generated over three months, or is that just an error in the report? And, and second question is just to confirm, this year was a hundred and one thousand of levy funding to the transportation department, and it's increased, projected to increase by forty-three thousand, I, I think about a hundred and forty-four for twenty-six. The ninety-six thousand, seven hundred is inclusive within that one forty four and not on top? I just wanted to confirm that. Thanks.
Through you, Your Worship. So in regards to your first question about fair revenue for the GTR, that's a, an estimate for twenty twenty-six, and that was confirmed through our finance team looking at our previous fair revenues and calculating and projecting forward. I can double check just to make sure that I have that correct and report to council in case I have had a typo. And in regards to the ninety-six thousand, seven hundred, that is inclusive. That was correct.
Thank you for that. And when we are looking at next year's budget, what's the fair revenue, the cost per ride? And what do staff consider when you're looking at increases to user fees and charges and so forth?
Through you, Your Worship. Thank you for the question, Counselor Greg. So that's still all to be determined in the study that we're currently undergoing. We will bring all of those options and possibilities back to council to make those educated decisions so that we're all on the same page and happy and satisfied with the project moving forward and what the future may look like. So there will be opportunities for counselors to participate in counselor-specific kind of workshops to gain your feedback as to what you'd like to see transit look like in our region. And then also, as a member of the general public, you can come out to any of our community stakeholders meetings and share your feedback there as well. But I will assure you that we will bring back a fair policy to this council to give you the opportunity to let us know what you think.
And could you just confirm what that current fare is on the GTR for that route?
Through you, Your Worship, the fair cost for the GTR is five dollars to go between Dundalk and Orangeville.
Okay, any further questions? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you, Stephanie. Next report is from the CAO. It is regarding Roma delegations. Didn't take that long to get back to that one. Randy, the floor is yours. Oh, I need to move, well, I don't think I need a mover and second on that one, do I?
Thank you Deputy Warden and through you and to, to County Council. So staff have been working, trying to track as many of the potential delegation requests for Roma through various discussions that have occurred through County Council as well as various subcommittees. So based on that tracking of lists and, and you'll see it on the screen, which we just finalized as of, as of yesterday, this, this is the, what we're recommending is, is be our delegation request for Roma. Of course, we'll take any direction from council with respect to adding or removing any of these delegation requests as council sees fit, but I'll just provide an overview of what we're recommending. First would be to the Ministry of Missile Fares and Housing, discussing strategies to improve housing affordability, encouraging activation of approved developments, especially those that have sat dormant for some time, support resilient housing technologies to reduce fossil fuel reliance and long-term ownership costs, and advocate for increased base funding and retention of Georgian colleges' own sound campus to be able to move forward with provincial priorities, including building more housing. That's something that last point, we probably want, want to weave through each of the delegations in terms of the importance of, of maintaining those rural college campuses in order to keep our skilled workforce to be able to move forward with these projects as well as aligning with provincial priorities. Second delegation request that staff would recommend is a ministry, a request to the Ministry of Economic Development, Job Creation and Trade, and Ministry of Finance, and this specifically will be around the topic of, of the importance and critical role of rural college campuses in developing a skilled workforce in order to, again, advance some of those provincial priorities such as building more housing and skilled workforce to support new and expanding industrial operations, energy projects, as well as even opening up the Ring of Fire, and advocating for the increased base funding to sustain in, in our specific example, the Georgian college own sound campus. Second staff delegation request recommendation is to the Ministry of Long-Term Care. Through that delegation, we could provide updates on the new Rockwood Terrace and request flexibility on occupancy timelines beyond the current fourteen-day occupancy window that's required, address delays in transitioning residents from the Behavioral Support Transition Unit due to provincial bed allocation priorities, continue discussions and implications on the legislative changes for personal support workers and resident support personnel, and further address and discuss any updates with respect to the new bed allocations for Gray Gables and future use of existing Rockwood Terrace when the new home is operational. The fourth delegation request is to the Ministry of Transportation, advocating for intersection control system support, improve signage for emergency and pedestrian safety, seeking commitments to partner on the east-west corridor options assessment to address Highway twenty-six congestion and in conjunction with Simcoe County and their, and the South Georgian Bay municipalities, and request improved coordination, coordination and communication during weather-related road closures. The next delegation request would be to the Ministry of Health, requesting increased offload nursing support, permanent funding for social navigators, and collaborating with Gray Bruce OHT and municipalities to improve recruitment and retention of physicians and healthcare professionals. Next delegation request to be to the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, advocating for, and this is something that's coming out of the Waste Management Community Practice Discussions, advocating for extending recycling collection under the EPR model to small institutional, commercial, and industrial properties, and express concerns about landfill impacts from new regulations excluding those properties from municipal collection. To the Ministry of the Solicitor General, seeking clarity and funding for new armed security directives at provincial offenses courts, and request a review of fence fines to align with enforcement costs and reduce reliance on property tax. And the last and final request that staff are recommending is to the Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry to discuss proposed changes to the conservation authorities, advocating for consistent watershed management and source water protection, emphasizing the value of sea lands for recreation and climate resilience, and reaffirming Gray County's commitment to participating in the upcoming review of the Nargis government plan. Just on that last one, the staff are working on a report. We're planning to bring that forward to the December eleventh Committee of the Whole meeting with respect to the proposed changes to conservation authorities. So this is again due to the deadline of the Roma request of November nineteenth, kind of being a bit proactive and submitting a placeholder request should council wish to do so. So those are the delegation requests that staff are recommending. Happy to take any further direction from council.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Is there any requests or need to expand that list or shorten it? Okay, everybody seems happy with that, but I do need a mover and second or to recommend or to accept the recommendation. Counselor Nielsen, Counselor Mackey. Aw, darn it. McKay, McKay. I was close. Sorry, Scott. I know, I know. Okay, so we have a mover and second. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much, Randy. Okay, we have the two consent items that I think we'll deal with now before the closed session. We have six A and six B. I think, was it Counselor McQueen that asked for six A, or was it Counselor Greg? Counselor Greg asked for six A. So you'll move that recommendation, or do you wish to change the direction? Is there a second for that? Oh, you didn't. Sorry. Sorry, I misunderstood. Someone care to move that recommendation? Counselor McQueen seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Okay, that is regarding the County Council and Advisory Committee meeting calendar. Anyone wish to have questions, discussion? Counselor Greg?
Thank you, and through you, Warden, Deputy Warden. At the top of the second page, it states, it is anticipated that electronic participation will continue in order to support attendance for those with variable schedules. I see a real benefit in having members present in the chambers, and I can understand at times the requirement to join virtually. But if this is the moment the council should be having a discussion about what our practice is, I didn't want it to, to pass by. I understand we went through our period of, of COVID, and it was certainly necessary, but I think at this time it is very beneficial to be able to look across the, the council floor at your peers and see the hands that go in the air, the hands, the, the interest, the engagement and so forth. And I just wondered what appetite there is from council to have some sort of a parameter on in, in-person attendance for a, a component of the year, a percentage of the meetings, a certain number of the meetings or so forth. It's certainly something that I'd be amenable to.
Okay, is there any discussion in that regard? Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Deputy Warden. I will say there is merit of having leaving it in there to a certain degree because, one, if you come down with the flu or you don't want to, you're not feeling well, you can still participate. And I think you weeks, Counselor, you, you didn't come because you didn't want to spill everybody else with your... Second part is weather. I know myself, I'm an hour away, and there's a lot of weather between here and there, and same with others. So you have that option as well, if, if it's inconvenient and risking your life and all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, how do you put a number on that? I don't know. I think generally it's been working well in most parts. I know myself, I will try to be here, but I think there is a flexibility that if you didn't have it, you, you would miss a meeting on those two perks, those two examples where you can still participate, still be part of it. So I, I certainly feel very strongly that it stays in there. And I think, you know, I don't think any of my colleagues would like to catch something that if I'm not feeling well, and I think that's one of the big ones that came out of COVID and, and that realization. But I think in most part, we do come here, and I would agree, I see the color of your eyes. I can't quite tell right now, but you know, it's, I think it's important, if we can, that we come. I, I don't know if it's being abused or not, but I just, I think it's important to have that flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor DeBreen?
Through you, we're approving the calendar and in general, the support attendance virtually. Would this, would that not require a notice of motion to revisit the procedural bylaw? Or develop an electronic participation policy so that we could look at best practices across? I don't know that, I think, anticipated that the electronic participation would continue as it currently stands unless otherwise a member brings notice of motion for it.
I would say fair enough, but I have no further amendment to this point, so we're just talking about the calendar, as you pointed out, but if there was a notice of motion to give further direction to reconsider, we could do that. But at this point, there is not such an amendment proposed. Any further discussion? Yeah, there is an update coming for the procedural bylaw, not too distant future, I understand. So there will be another opportunity if so inclined to do that. So on the calendar itself, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? That is carried. Seven B or six B? Seven B or six B rather is regarding the Gray County Egg Services Center annual report. I think Counselor McQueen wished to move to receive that. Is that correct? Yes. Is there a second for that? Counselor Eccles will second that. Counselor McQueen?
Thank you, Deputy Warden, and I only raised it because of the discussion we had about two hours ago, but I will follow up with the Egg Office if they would certainly do a presentation to this, especially with experimental workers.
Very good. Any other discussion on that one? Not seeing any. I'll call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Okay, we do have a closed session. I believe that we're ready for that, Madam Clerk. We are. Okay, so the closed session request is that the Committee of the Whole does now go into closed session pursuant to section 239, Part Two of the Municipal Act 2001 is amended to discuss, one, litigation or potential litigation, specifically the Eden Oak subdivision, and B, or two, a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality, specifically a land acquisition. So I need a mover to go into closed session. Counselor McKay? Counselor Patterson will second that. All those in favor? That is carried. I'm not sure which staff we need to stay. But I expect they know who they are. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Committee of the Whole proceeded in closed session, discussed only the matters noted in, in the resolution, and direction was given to staff. We have a motion here to be considered in open session. It is now on your screen there. Someone care to move that, please? Counselor Eccles, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? That is carried. Any other business to be considered here this afternoon? Don't you dare raise your arm in the air, Mr. Nielsen. Don't you dare! No, really. Do you have something you want to say? Go ahead.
Just a quick comment. We missed you as chair, Deputy Warden.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say I missed you as counsel, but I'm not sure. Anyway, okay. Not seeing any other business. Is there any notice of motion? Not seeing any. A motion to adjourn. Counselor DeBreen, seconded by Counselor Nielsen. We stand adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.